I drove by and the van, that's really weird, you know. When I come back and show you all that whole thing, the trailer was just blaze. I mean blaze.
More to them than value of the trailer.
I just got there at the start of, you know.
Went up the huh?
Oh, yeah, that trailer was gone. It was a big trailer too, you know. You must have been living in it, working on those things beside it.
Cause they are.
Kind of created a weird house.
Go in by yourself.
Yeah, I mean.
So they gotta see what they think it is.
About the time I went towards Fountain Town, you know, it was about fifteen, twenty minutes.
But may get picture, may not truck headed.
We're all headed that one.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be totally gone.
Oh, it was definitely gonna be totally gone. I don't think they could stop it, especially the trailer.
I had a new guy.
I'm about to.
A mobile guy?
Yeah, that was kinda weird.
The Matlock family, they lost the tractor in there.
They were in the field.
They could try to make it. Taffy called fire. No, wow. The one Matlock, at the Matlock.
They couldn't get it.
He helped us bail, tractor bailed us. He was a cold third person. They get there in time. He said, tractor called fire with a diesel hydraulic leak. He said, once it got going into both of them, this.
Video content wise, so.
I said, well, I got a planning commission.
Okay, so there is a part of the.
It took.
All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order for the June 24th meeting of the Area Plan Commission. We ask that you turn off any cell phones, electronic devices, any noise makers. Our first order of business this evening will be the adoption of last month's meeting minutes that were submitted electronically.
Move to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, moved in second into, to adopt last month's meeting minutes submitted electronically. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Looks like the, this evening, we have Mr. Eden and Mr. McDaniel are absent. So we've got a seven of nine member board. So anything that is voted on this evening would, will always require a five, five votes to approve or five votes to take any action. So if you don't like your odds with only seven people here, then you can look for a continuance or, actually just request a continuance if you, if you would like to do that, that would be an option. I'd advise you that all testimony is being recorded and is taken under oath. We also are under video recording now for the new state statutes. We request that if you're wishing to speak, you wait to do so until you're called upon. And then when you do step up to the microphone, you'll be sworn in by our attorney prior to speaking. We ask that you give your full name for the record and spell your last name for accurate meeting minutes. Our planning director, Ms. Brooks, will give a staff report, and then the petitioners are given ten minutes for their presentation. That's followed by a collective ten minutes for remonstrators. And then we give five minutes to any government officials that would like to speak. And then the petitioner gets a five-minute rebuttal period. Our attorney will offer a two-minute and a one-minute warning while you're speaking. I'll ask that everybody conduct themselves in a civilized, respectful manner, and if you can't do that, we reserve the right to ask you to leave. And with that, we will begin with our hearing items. Item number three, George and Donna Robinson has asked to be continued. Is there anybody here for that case? Oh, Mr. Gibson. We'll go ahead and swear you in if you're gonna ask for a continuance.
I do. Mike Gibson, G.I.B.S.O.N. We ask for a continuance to, to the July hearing, just to gather more information and prepare our case. We brought in, brought in a zoning administrator to help us with the project.
Okay.
Move to accept the continuance.
Second.
All right, been moved in second into accept the continuance to the July meeting for George and Donna Robinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. So with that, we will move to item number one, which is a minor subdivision appeal.
Our first item tonight is an appeal of a minor subdivision, S.J.H. Minor Subdivision. This is located in New Palestine on U.S. area in, on U.S. 52, near Schilde Meyer Woods and Village subdivisions. It is near the intersection with County Road 700 West. I know those of you familiar with this area have a name for this barn that I am not thinking of currently. But it is, it has been used for many years as a single-family residence. So it is currently zoned commercial neighborhood. 7103 West U.S. 52 is the address, and it has recently been purchased by Angela Huffman. So a little history on this minor subdivision and how it came to be appealed here tonight. On March 13th, this was approved and reviewed and approved by the technical committee with comments from planning, surveyor, highway, and auditor. Those were addressed, and it was given an approval by the plat committee. Also in March, four yeas, one no, with conditions that the county and state come to a resolution on right-of-way dedication and covenants addressed driveway access easement and maintenance agreement. However, there were remonstrators who appealed the subdivision's approval, namely Aaron and Tyler Mansfield, who did submit a, an appeal. They were joined by several other neighbor, neighbors in the, in the neighborhood, immediately adjacent to the west on Side Drive. And I believe some of them are here this evening. Here's some photographs of that site. Traffic concern was a primary reason for the appeal and the busyness of U.S. 52. This is a NDOT facility, so driveway permits would go through NDOT for any permitting. And they have been cued into this. So just to run you through a little bit the, the process that accompanies an appeal like this and a minor subdivision like this and development on a site like this. First of all, when a minor subdivision is appealed, the plan commission acts as the plat committee. So we kind of hear it again here tonight with, given the, the presentation. The subdivision control ordinance does give you some guidance. So an approval is recommended if the following criteria are met. That the subdivision will not impede normal and orderly development of improvements of the parcels surrounding properties. That necessary and adequate utilities and drainage facilities have been or are being provided. That adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress or egress. That the subdivision will not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or general welfare. And that the subdivision will not create more than one lot served by a private drive. And upon finding that all pertinent sections of the zoning and subdivision control ordinances have been met, the plat committee may grant primary approval and the final plat may be administratively approved. There are 12 months that the petitioner has to get the plat recorded then, and that must happen in order for the, in order for the subdivider or the owner to pull a building permit. So the minor subdivision truly splits the property into two. That's what it's doing here, is it is dividing land. Zoning does not change in this case. It is zoned commercial neighborhood. The lots created must meet lot standards for the CN zoning district. Uses must comply with land use table. If you want to get a building permit or an improvement location permit for commercial projects, those do get reviewed by the technical committee as well before that building permit is issued. And all projects on NDOT roadways must be reviewed by NDOT to get a driveway permit. So based on that recommendation here, and I guess I say this with all faith in my department and its ability to review plans for development, is to approve this plat for subdivision. But I understand the petitioner's concerns for sure. And, and definitely I appreciate the attention they draw to traffic problems at the site and others. And that's basically what I go into on this last page of my staff report, which is that my appeal, that the appeal references concerns about traffic safety, stormwater flooding, water and sewer availability, and privacy among other concerns. While these concerns are valid, and they are handled by existing county and state ordinances outside of the subdivision control process. So in the ways that these are being handled, traffic information is reviewed by NDOT prior to driveway permit being issued. We also have the highway, the highway commissioner who sits on our technical committee and, and takes this all in. A traffic, it could be potentially that a traffic study or something like that could be required. Drainage review is performed by the county surveyor to make sure that adequate drainage ponds and things like that are taken into consideration. Also that the floodway and the creek's ability on this, adjacent to this site are not damaged to take on stormwater. Sanitary sewer has been addressed. Doe Creek Utilities is actually extending its utilities or sewer line to the site to handle this development. The proposed development would be, the barn is being converted to a commercial site. Used to be determined, I believe. And then the, a new facility for a small clinician like a, I'm probably messing this up, so I'll let the petitioner, if they have any more to add to this, go. But I think it was a dentist's office or an optometrist, one or the other, would be at that site, a small medical office. And so if a use is proposed, if one of those uses is proposed, proposed, proposed is a special exception, it would be required to go to the BZA for a hearing there, and neighbors would be notified once again. If not, it would go straight to ILP review in front of the technical committee. And getting that approved would basically equal a, a building permit. In that case, a public hearing would not be required because this is already zoned commercial neighborhood. Certain concerns like commercial development, like landscaping, building materials, exterior lighting, dumpster enclosures, parking lot details would have to be included in construction plans. So those would be addressed as well by the technical committee and also through administrative review. Failure to meet any of these regulations would result in the denial of the permit or its continual holding up. Once again, failure to issue it. So these are things we handle in our department on a daily basis. And I am, I've included minutes from the technical meeting, from the technical committee meeting for the subdivision plat as well as the plat committee. But I'm happy to turn it over to the parties appealing this subdivision plat. Or, and Rhonda, let me know if I'm wrong here, is this where we should invite Mrs. Huffman up? Okay, and, and let me know if you have questions for me.
I have a question for you. When it comes to, and it's a technical question, when it comes to the following criteria being met, obviously, they're not all met in my opinion, and I think all of us will probably agree. Does that automatically reject it? Or is it just a preponderance of the, the majority of those five criteria?
My interpretation is more, in a, more of a preponderance of them?
Ask me the question.
So there's five criteria that need to be met to approve. It says recommend approval to plat committee if the following criteria met. I think we're all gonna see at least one of them as a no. If one of them is no, does that mean we have to automatically reject it? Or does it just have to be a majority? Or can just one be yes and you vote yes?
Find one to be no and all required, then.
And that's the question. I don't know if all are required. Okay.
You're saying that section, okay, section 150, so the subdivision control ordinance gives the following guidance. 155.021, technical committee review of the minor subdivision plat. Recommend approval to plat committee if the following criteria are met. That the subdivision will not impede normal and orderly development of improvements of the parcel and surrounding properties. That necessary and adequate utilities and drainage facilities have been or are being provided. That adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress, egress. That subdivision will not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or general welfare. And number five is subdivision will not create more than one lot served by a private drive. And I guess maybe we need to double check, and I can do that while you guys talk about this more, to make sure there was not a and or an or at the end of number four. Would you like me to check that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Was there not an actual plat?
The very first pages of my staff report show the plat and.
I thought I saw that.
This one might have a couple markups on it, but.
Cause it's been reviewed and approved by technical committee. So those five items are, those five, five items that you read are not for the plat committee, they're for the tech committee. And the tech committee is saying that all five of those are met.
Both they are.
They re, they, they.
All have to be met.
They approved it on the 13th of March. Four to, four to one. I'm sorry, the tech, the tech committee approved it on March 13th.
And the minutes are from the tech committee or the plat committee?
Both.
Both, yeah.
Both as a four to one?
I'm sorry, the four to one was the plat. I'm sorry, I misread that. It's the 313, it just said it was reviewed and approved by the technical committee. And those minutes were in our packet, I thought.
I, I don't see the minutes in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
They're not?
Can we see them up here?
In the packet that we were emailing?
Oh.
It might have been.
Maybe I just read it, cause we, I subscribed to all the minutes, so I might have, I might have picked that up on, on that email.
Lots of paperwork. I'll pass it down.
Is she looking at the tech committee minutes or the plat?
I think she's looking at the plat.
Yeah, so B says, B says it all have to be met.
Now, the plat committee has received sign-offs before they receive it. And we don't necessarily get, we get an approval or a disapproval or, or a list of things that need to be corrected beforehand. So we're, we're going a little bit beyond what we normally, you know, if, if the tech committee sees it and goes over it all and approves it, not like the plat committee reviews the tech committee unless there's something they've written. Sometimes if they have a problem or something, or they state that they had to look into a matter further, is the way it's normally addressed.
So is there typically unanimous?
These five things you're talking about, we don't necessarily see those on the plat committee. They seem by the tech committee.
Okay, it, historically, plat when coming or when we see them, I mean, has been pretty unanimous. This was a four to one. Is that typical these days or no?
Uh, sometimes.
Okay, what was, were there any dissenting comments?
Mr. Holden.
Okay. You don't need, just, that's okay.
I think the major discussion for me during it was, there was issues of, it seemed like a little bit different way of they were gonna park on this. You know, like, it was almost, I'm, could be wrong, maybe I don't remember right. But it seemed like it was one parcel I kept trying to figure out how there was gonna be shared parking and there was gonna be designated parking for each business. And that was my biggest, spent a lot of time trying to figure that out.
Thank you. Can I have one more, one more question for me on zoning history? So this is a commercial neighborhood. We have a bunch of residential, which is, we're gonna always run into conflict when, when we have some of these mixed areas. What's the zoning history? This has been CN? And was it administratively changed, or this is just what it's been?
I believe it was last time there was a zone. That would take it all the way back.
Can I ask a quick question of the board? Which is the one that we're not gonna do?
Number three. Are you talking about the continuance?
Which of the five items from technical committee, if this is an and, would be no go?
He didn't say.
Oh, there's, I think you're gonna, I think when you listen to everybody, I think you're gonna find there's several. There's definitely a concern with the, you know, I haven't, living in Shore Creek Township myself, I could tell you that. I've, I've been at the house across the street many times back when the Hendrickses were there. I could tell you, I would never pull out left. I would always turn right, turn around at Schilde Meyer Woods and go that way. It's just too dangerous. There's, it's just, there's an incline there, and I think you're gonna see the ingress and egress. There's, that's gonna be dangerous. Maybe if you change it the right turn only in and right turn only out. Maybe if NDOT, which I doubt NDOT's gonna do anything. They can't even do U.S. 40 and 600 East correctly. So I doubt they're gonna do U.S. 52 and 700 West correctly. So it, it, it's just unfortunate. I don't, you know. I, I don't think there's a problem with the CN. It's just the problem is, is, it sounds like they're gonna bring a lot of traffic in, and that's not gonna work in this area. So I think you're gonna see multiple ones of these. I think they have other concerns, but I don't know if they'll meet parts of those five. I mean, obviously, public safety is a concern. I don't think health or general welfare will be that. That far. And then I don't know about, that the subdivision will not create more than one lot. I think they are just, uh, one private drive. I think that NDOT would probably require just one drive. I think that'd be. And then also the, the adequate utilities and drainage, that's also a concern, cause they don't have that yet, but it's coming that way, I believe, through New Palestine.
They're, well, this is Doe Creek.
If they waited, it would, it would possibly be there. So that one would be met, met, met at that point.
Doe Creek is coming from the Marion County side.
Okay.
And they've reserved the whole back portion of the lot for drainage. It's an easement.
Do we, we don't have the, the actual drawing, though. There, that's it, okay. Yeah. Okay, that's the one that I was thinking, yeah. But I guess procedurally, though, typically the plat committee, which we're acting as the plat committee this evening, you, you wouldn't consider the five items under the tech committee.
No, because.
You, you receive their approval and then you move forward from that. So these five items wouldn't be under consideration.
But there, a lot of times, she may give us a list of things that they were concerned about that they would have, one, taken care of before. That makes any sense?
You've seen it, right? Yeah.
Is it possible for me to?
Not yet, no.
On their approval, did they have any questions or concerns?
I don't think so.
But they were addressed.
That's the way she explains it, is.
Yeah, but he has no power. It's in dot.
They went that way.
Gary has no power. That's the problem. I know. That's the problem for him.
He went that way.
No, that's the comments.
When I gave you the mitt, would you do?
I passed it that way.
They still had it that way.
You wanna see it?
No.
So this is, when you talk about those items that you're looking at, are the building setback requirements correct? Things like, the easements, are there typos? Lot size? Things of that nature. That's just the planning department.
All right, so with, these actually work backwards a little bit. So we would hear first from the, from the petitioner, right? Not the person that filed the appeal? Or is it the person that filed the appeal gets the petitioner's time? I think we've done it both ways on accident. Yeah, the petitioner, so, okay. Are you guys ready to hear from the? Right, yeah.
As, as long as time's equal, I don't care which one goes first.
Okay, the petitioner then is Ms. Huffman here. Is that the petitioner? Come on up. Be sworn in.
Angela Huffman. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I do. Angela Huffman, H-U-F-F-M-A-N. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I just felt like I could answer maybe some of your questions. I had emailed some of the months, we've talked about things. We are a local-owned business. Kayla was correct. My husband's an optometrist. We've been in New Palestine for 25 years. And I actually grew up in New Palestine. My parents went to New Palestine High School. We're very much about keeping hometown feel. And when this came up, we had been at the, the barn when I was younger. They were great contributors to the community. And we just really thought this was a way that we could keep a piece of history because probably without commercial, and believe me, with the costs we've already incurred, you know, it would be torn down. So we just really feel like this isn't a corporate entity. So that, that was one of the, that's the reason that we bought. The other plat that we're looking at and we're doing a discussion with is a New Palestine graduate dentist, already has an established practice. His family went here. Both of his wife and his family were just both longtime community. We've been longtime family friends. So we felt this was a great way to give back. And it being small commercial, so you have a optometry office and a dental office. 3,500 feet for my husband's, and his would be somewhere between 3,500 and 4,000. The main thing that I did want to address is all of those items have been and are being addressed. So the main one is NDOT. I understand the concern there. And that actually, we have to do a traffic study. It's actually ongoing right now. Tens of thousands of dollars to get that. A site engineer who does that has already met with NDOT. Things like it would be just a one driveway. We'd have to move the driveway down. It would have to be across from the other side of the residence. They're doing traffic studies and all that's involved with that. One of the reasons as far as commercial, also with ours as being small commercial, you're not talking, you're not talking, you know, a McDonald's or a fast food or anything like that. You know, my husband probably sees 20 patients a day spread out through a 12-hour day, you know, maybe more than that. So we've got zip codes. Again, that is all being addressed. So all of those areas are, we have a, a site plan engineer who's drawing that up. We've already spoken to Doe Creek Utilities. He's drawing up everything appropriately and working with Doe Creek to do the septic. Same thing with the detention pond, like, again, we're not just, those are all on the site plans, and we have engineers who are doing that. Kind of going back to what Kayla said, all of those things have to be in place before we get the building permit. Also getting, we have to work with the Department of Homeland Security because it's going from residential to commercial. Have a site structural. from residential to commercial, have a site structural engineer on that. We're not, we want to do this right. We want to, we understand, again, our neighbors. We have friends who live in Chilomar Woods, very good friends, lots of, actually, a few different sets. I do think probably the biggest thing is, is the traffic. But again, that's, that's what NDOT, and we're still, you know, waiting to hear, hear back from that because they said our study will be done by the end of July. But I, I don't feel like there's really any other, it was, we didn't, we're not asking for a change. We wouldn't have bought the venue or the land if we, we would have never bought it if we, obviously, if we thought, you know, if it wasn't already commercial. And we're not developers, so we called, they said it was commercial, so we were like, we're community commercial, small, we're good to go. Again, knowing the driveway, but had already checked out all of those and have site engineers on the, on for that. So I would also kind of concur that I feel like they looked over that, the committee before, and they were good to go with that. And any of those other things, the five things, actually, knowing that and our engineer was at that meeting, those were all addressed. So we feel like we're doing everything that both the county and state requires to be done. I don't know. Do you have?
What is your husband's business again?
He's an optometrist. It's best inside, I care.
How many, how many parcels are there and how many drives? How many private drives?
There were no, how many are there now?
How many, under this plan, how many parcels?
Just one.
Just one parcel and one drive?
No, no, I'm sorry. Two parcels. We're trying to do it into two parcels, so it would be the dentist. We're looking at about an acre, 1.1, 1.2 for him. And then we would keep the rest and there's one drive. And that drive, again, has to be moved as far as possible across from the other one. That's all stipulations of NDOT. There, in fact, right now, there are two drives, which is even more, I know it's private residence, but there are actually two drives. And we would have one and push it down away from the stoplight.
So you would delete one more? There would be a, you would get rid of, so there are two drives?
Correct. And we're going down to one and in a different location that will mirror the land, the house across from us.
Banned one of the two and you only have one drive?
Correct.
Both parcels?
Correct.
Okay.
So it comes in, I don't, I'm trying to see if, you don't have that plan? I'm sorry, I didn't bring that. But you would come in and then you would turn and to address the parking, it's just, there's, there's parking just in the middle. So like, if this is the land, his building would be here, the barn is right here, and then we just share the parking in the middle. So we're.
Shared lot, is there a lot agreement between the two?
Pardon?
There's a shared agreement of parking between the lots?
Yes, there will be. I mean, we're, I mean, we're shared maintenance. We've discussed that. We, again, because we can't, we don't have that finalized, he wants to proceed. We're waiting on traffic study for numbers and to make sure we can even divide the plot. So, but, but pretty much his, he's got his parking that will facilitate and the engineer drew it up that way based on state guidelines for his building and we have ours. But there's, they're like right next to each other. So they're in the center and the buildings are on the outside. So there's no parking between us and the neighbors. Like, does that make sense?
I, I'm just worried about how the lots, you have two separate lots.
With one entrance and shared parking.
One entrance, shared parking, and there's an agreement for access or whatever.
Correct, yes. We will have easements, yes, that's all, yeah, for that and maintenance.
Have you paused any of the work due to the appeal?
Pardon?
Have you paused any of the work due to, due to the appeal? Paused any of the construction or work?
No, actually, because we're just doing the roof and the framing. We still, we should be back with our engineer, engineer stamped drawings within the next couple of weeks that we would then submit to the Department of Homeland Security.
How many total buildings were there to be in the, in the plan?
Two.
Forever and ever or just two?
Yeah, that's all that we're planning on. I actually, we're, we're too old. This is our last. Our daughter just graduated from optometrist school. She's joining the business, so, you know, we're wanting to expand, but, yeah.
And you've, you've mentioned you have been working with remonstrators, the, those who submitted the appeal. What have you done with some of the privacy concerns? Or what conversations or what, how those have been addressed?
Well, I said, so the concerns were that they had addressed was the tree line, that not to, you know, disturb that or anything. And I want to keep as many trees as possible. There is, I would love to keep that tree line. We're not planning on taking anything down. The, and I had told them the only thing that we would, if, if the sewer ran someplace and they had to put a sewer, you know, to connect to Doe Creek, but that would even just be at the front. Absolutely don't want to take anything down as far as that. Again, I would say it's a small business. It's not a, you know, we're open till five or, I mean, our office, one night, I think they're open till six. The dentist is the same way. We're not, yeah, I don't, I think that was, I mean, you obviously hear from them, but...
I think, I think that the way you probably look at this is it's, in a lot of ways, it's like an integrated center, which we don't really have that sort of designation, but it's, it's a building with an, it's an outlot in a way. You could kind of look at it like that, that these two buildings are sharing a parking lot. Kind of similar to the office condos that are down the street, I think, that Dr. Hilton has there. But, yeah, so it's that sort of thing. And tonight, what we're looking at is the, it's the, it's just the plat, you know, I think that's like what Brian was saying, we're looking at upon the approval of the tech committee. I mean, it's a commercial neighborhood, it's CN, so does it fit the comp plan? Does it fit the zoning? Is it a proper use to divide up? I know it's kind of.
You might have her tell you all, all the sign offs, we got, you know, drainage, tech committee, I mean, there's a whole li, highway, I mean, there's a whole list that have to sign off. The planning department, they have to sign off and we don't really technically make a decision normally unless the sign offs are there, are going to be there for sure, so.
Well, you've heard my concerns with NDOT. I won't repeat them over and over about how they're not really doing what they need to be doing. Would you be acceptable to right turn only in and right turn only out? Because, I mean, I drive that area probably once a week and I don't want to say yes and then get hit by somebody coming out of there because that is very dangerous. I mean, I, I mean, I mean, that's your concern. I mean, so for me, I'm like, if you did right turn only in and right turn only out, I think that's, that would, you know, save some of those really bad accidents. Obviously, Gary Poole doesn't come to these meetings, otherwise, I know he lives not far from there either, so he'd be like, he'd probably see what I'm talking about.
Yeah. I mean, do you feel like that's still a concern with the driveway moved all the way down?
Yeah, it's still, I mean, I, like I said, who used to live there, I sometimes would drop off signs for campaigning and they put it in the yard and then I would never turn left out of there. I'd always turn around their driveway, come out, turn right, turn back around because it's just so dangerous. I mean, there's a certain area, it's like, it means like US 40 and 600 East, which I mentioned earlier, it's so dangerous there and yet NDOT's doing nothing for, till 2030. And so that's the problem. I can't, if this was a Gary Poole project, I wouldn't be as worried because I could talk to Gary and we could, you know, fix my concerns, but, and the public's concerns. But here, we can't, our hands are tied. I mean, person with the most power would be Senator Crider, who's on, who's in charge of the, of the Transportation Committee for Senate. But, you know, that's the problem we've got here.
I do respectfully hear what you're saying. I, I mean, right at this time, at this moment, I wouldn't, I, I think that's very highly likely, based on the traffic studies, that that's what NDOT comes with. I guess my, I would like to see what the, what the traffic studies show, I guess.
Okay, that'll be done, that'll be done, end of July, you said?
Yes, they said that would be done at the end of July. So I would also comment, and I respectfully, I hear everything, again, that you're saying, but I, I do feel like, isn't, isn't that what the other committees are for? And if, if all of the guidelines are met and we're doing everything correctly, I mean, I'll, like, yeah. It's just hard because we, we were wanting to do something very good and it's definitely cost us more than we thought. We were trying to save that. And, you know, I would also put, if anybody, if anybody wanted to buy it for what, it's just, it's.
Well, you could do it for one, you could do it for just, for your husband's business. I mean, you could do it right, I don't think there's anything to stop, they can't.
It's the same exact things.
One specific item, she does not have to subdivide this.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
They could do the same plan, subdivision is irrelevant. That is because they want to do it that way for their business planning.
Okay, that's what I was saying. All right.
Does anybody else have any other?
So the two, okay, the two buildings, much like an integrated center, the two buildings could exist on the, on the one lot together. But then it would be.
For us, it's just, it, for businesses, we're getting older, they're getting older. Once you start entwining, it.
No, I understand, yeah. I just wasn't sure if we had that, I was a little confused on the ability to have the two buildings on, on one lot, so.
Doesn't it show everything on that drawing right there? The other drawing?
One?
The, not the drawing, well, it's on this drawing too, but.
This one does, yeah.
It has, there's more detail on the one.
Mm-hmm.
Because it shows parking and everything on that other drawing, I believe.
Okay.
This one doesn't show parking, huh?
No.
Does it? No. It just shows the easements and the lots.
So just to confirm, everything that we see on this plan and all the uses, everything will be by right? And it's just the subdivision into two parcels that is causing the issue for an ownership interest? And they haven't considered a leasehold interest or any other conveyances that might be available under the existing zoning structure?
I will have to look at this, but I believe one of the special exception in CN.
So it would end up at the, yeah, the BZA, possibly. Okay, any more questions for?
Where's the drive? Well, remember it has that horseshoe drive in front of it. And it's got a drive here. But NDOT's going to have to, or the actual drive.
You guys, good. Yep. All right, no more questions? All right, we'll have the, the appellate come up, please. We have a, how many people do we have that want to speak against the petition? How many?
Two.
Two? Okay, well, you'll have, you'll share your 10 minutes then, so, all right. Come on up and be sworn in. She can swear you're both in at the same time if you're going to tag team.
We'll raise your right hand.
Both of you, yeah.
So thank you for hearing our case today. We.
You might step up, make sure you're speaking into the microphone there so we catch your...
So just, we are neighbors both on the South Creekside Drive, right behind this property. And I think like Mr. Woolridge said, one of our biggest concerns is the traffic in that area. It's extremely dangerous as it is now, the way the land is right in front of this barn. There's been several accidents. I've only lived in this neighborhood for less than two years and just last summer, someone was killed right outside our house from the exact thing that he's talking about with turning left. And there's not much in the way of visibility, especially, there's cornfields there, so of course, and when they're, when the corn is high, it's even more difficult. The kind of changes they're proposing, the amount of parking spaces there, looking at putting in, you know, all the additional traffic there is a big concern for us. Again, we also have concerns about the water retention flooding in that area with the creek. It's a stormwater. It floods very frequently, especially in spring and fall. Several of the neighbors on the adjoining, adjoining properties have problems with water in our houses already and we're concerned about how it will be impacted. Again, you know, privacy and another thing that we are concerned about also is just the barn is humongous. There's more than enough space just in the barn by itself that, you know, both of these businesses could be in the same building. We're not sure why there seems to be a need for a second building, especially with the parking that's going to be right on the property line. I don't know if you guys saw the, I'm sure you guys have this one. But that's a lot of parking spaces. There's over 50 there. This, the space that there, this doctor's in right now only has, you know, a couple more than that and they're in a building with four offices. So we don't quite see the need for this much space for these two businesses. You know, we, the, the county, their future Hancock plan anticipates that the traffic on our road is going to quadruple in the next few years with no plans to change how many lanes are there. So we're just, I mean, it's too much. It's a dangerous area. I think that there are some concerns with this project in particular.
Well, I've met Angela and she is a very nice person and I love that they're redoing the barn because we've lived there for 44 years and looked at the barn and been at the Hendrix for many parties and I love that that's getting redone. My concerns are, like her, it's such a large building and if you can't have something like a, like a big wedding venue there because of the traffic, why can't both offices be in the same building? Our neighborhood, our whole neighborhood, all the houses are on a well. So I didn't know if this, these offices were going to be on a well, would that affect water table or if they're going to be connected to water? That's just something I don't know. The second building seems to be pretty close to the neighborhood line, which is right behind Erin's home. So it would be like she comes in her backyard and she's got a building and parking spaces behind that building that is on her drawing and on the drawing that we have. Another thing would be the lighting, like what lighting would be required there? Because if you come out and there's like building lights, it's going to deter the niceness of the neighborhood of coming out on your own yard and looking at the sky and, and all of that stuff. And the detention pond, I don't really, that would, that seems to be more behind where my house is and I don't really understand what a detention pond is. I haven't gotten all the information on that yet. So I do understand it's commercial property. I do understand that maybe something horrible could go in and a doctor's office isn't necessarily horrible. I just think the amount of room and how close it is to the property lines of the neighborhood are. And, and also, somebody told me that they were speaking with somebody at the county where they, that person had said there was a possibility of a third building being added, which isn't part of this and I understand that and you'd have to go through all this again, but I, I just don't know what the future holds for the property. But I, it's better than a McDonald's to have a doctor's office in your backyard and I understand that too. So I just, whatever your consideration is, that would be great for lighting and traffic and all of those deterrents. So, thank you.
So remind me, on the other side of Chilomar Woods entrance there, is there also like a dentist or wasn't there a building there?
Restaurant.
Was it? Well, the restaurant's across the street, isn't it?
Right.
But isn't there like a?
Yes.
On the south side?
It used to be a dental office or something there or doctor's office?
Yes. There's a whole strip of offices there.
So obviously, so obviously, it's in, everything's in that place. Obviously, a retention pond, if that's what the surveyor thinks, I mean, every time our surveyor gets involved, luckily we've had some pretty good ones, they, they actually improve the area where the flooding, if there's flooding, it usually gets better. And so that's always a positive. I think the only thing I really see is the traffic issue, which, I mean, once again, it's NDOT, it's not Gary Poole, it was Gary Poole.
They can't really widen the road there either because I was thinking maybe they'd get, put a turn lane in or something.
They could, but that's not what NDOT's doing, as you saw on US 40. They restricted it, made people very upset in our community. In Cumberland, they made it one lane each way instead of leaving it two lanes. So they're not in that business, it looks like.
Yeah.
I guess that's the question, I want to make sure I heard or understood correctly. So I think I heard you say that comprehensive plans that traffic's kind of quadruple? Did I hear you say that?
Yes, so I looked at the future Hancock report from the website and right
And right now it's listing this section of the road as 1,000 to 5,000 volume per day. And, um, by 2050, expecting 20,000 to 40,000.
Right. So I guess that's, that's my question, your question. So it's gonna happen, it's proposed to happen, right? So would it be, I mean, I guess my question is like, it's gonna happen, so we're not gonna be able to prevent it from happening. So would it be better if we start thinking about it now and preparing for it? Like this kind of development's going to happen. So like, let's get ahead of it and work with NDOT to prepare for it. Because this kind of development, like, like you're saying, is a lot better than a McDonald's.
Right, yeah.
This traffic's a lot better than a McDonald's traffic.
Sure, yeah.
So if you have somebody that, it sounds like to me that by, and I don't know this person, so, but it sounds like they're vested in New Pal, they're connected to New Pal. And I think I heard you say that, um, you're aware of them or, um, they've been involved in New Pal. I mean, it sounds like those are the kind of people that we want investing in our county, right?
Absolutely.
So like, why don't we figure out a way to work with NDOT and get in front of NDOT and say like, how do we make this work with this traffic situation that creates safety and security? Because according to our comprehensive plan, people are coming, it's gonna, it's gonna get worse. And we don't want a McDonald's buying up this land or this, these people selling it to McDonald's. Because good grief, that's gonna be what we don't want.
Right.
We don't want that much traffic. Where like, if we could work with NDOT and be really, um, stern and committed, like we need to figure this out because we don't want what Scott said-
Yeah, it's, it's a-
Happening.
It's a great use, I think you guys said it right, it is a great use.
How can we make it work?
It's just-
The good use of the property, having a doctor's office or two. It'd be ni- nice if both offices could be in the same building. I think you could, you know-
Well, and, I mean, kind of what you were saying is, we, we understand this is a commercial neighborhood zoned, um, property. But it has never been utilized as such until now.
Yeah.
Um, it's always been a residence, so, or it has been for years. So I guess kind of what we're hoping is that, you know, it's gonna get approved, we get that. It's, you know, that's how it's zoned, that's how the neighborhood is going. But what we're kinda hoping is that at least we could make it or postpone it until, um, the petitioners are able to do their traffic study to determine what kind of driveway, how they can make the roads safe, um, you know. Can, would NDOT even say that they could have that many parking spots, that kind of thing, you know?
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have a say on that.
But you know, the, the amount of traffic and how, how we can make it safe, you know, we have little kids.
Yeah.
They're gonna be four tomorrow, you know? So I'm worried about the traffic, how we're gonna be able to play in our backyard with this, with a parking lot 20 feet from my backyard. You know, it's, it's a lot. And I mean, we've spoken with a lot of the other neighbors that are on this line. And we had no problems when we knew that, um, the Huffman's were buying it and remodeling the barn for themselves. That was not a problem. It's when we're getting into adding all the additional buildings, all the additional parking spaces, the amount of traffic that they're proposing by having two businesses in this spot. It's just, it's overwhelming and I, I all kind of feel like it's too much for this spot.
And I, I absolutely hear what you're saying. And I hear what the petitioner's saying, but I feel like there, we could figure out a solution that could create a really win-win here and work with NDOT. It seems like we just-
That's kinda what we're saying.
You know what I mean? I just feel like we could make it, we could figure out a way to make it all, all work. It's just gonna take some-
We'd like it to work.
Right, you know, but I would hate for them to, you know, to sell it and a McDonald's or some other kind of user that's not from our county to come in, that's not gonna care about all the things that you just said, and we have no choice at all.
Right.
And a developer might not care about all those things that you just articulated. So it's like, it seems like this is an opportunity, like, to figure out how we could possibly, maybe not get everybody, everything that they want, but like, how could we come closer to figuring it out? And so that your kids are safe, the petitioner can get what they need to make it work. I don't know, I don't have the answer, but I feel like we could get closer to that.
And I guess, from what you said, they're, they're still doing the study on the highway, right? So they're still doing that, so we haven't even heard that, um, final part yet, so.
Okay, any more questions? Nope. Alright, thanks.
Alright.
So you get five minutes, Ms. Huffman, to, for rebuttal. If you've got anything else you wanna say or react to any of those comments.
So Kayla, I have a question. Could you remind us of, if this is approved, the other hurdles they have to jump through after NDOT gives them approval? And you don't just sign off on everything at this point?
No, after the plat is approved and recorded, then begins the development plan, really. Um, so Mrs. Huffman would, um, submit a plan to develop the site. Um, if the uses she proposes, if either of them are a special exception, then that would require a public hearing, the neighbors would be notified and have a chance to come to the BZA. Additional commitments might be placed on the use at that point. If they're permitted by right, then no further public hearing is required. Um, once the improvement location permit or building permit is submitted, a complete drainage plan needs to be signed off on by the surveyor. That is a multi-month process. Doe Creek would need to extend a sewer line to the site. Any requirements from NDOT would need to be included on construction plans and then fulfilled. Um, and of course, review by the planning department for things like the building design, because this is in the corridor overlay, in addition to landscaping review, parking standards, and also photometric plans, so that's lighting, and we are a dark sky friendly community. Um, all of that would be taken into consideration. And so then, once all of those things are addressed, and once again, that would go back to the technical committee, then we would issue a building permit.
Your traffic study, that was required by NDOT, right? They required it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, you get five, five minutes.
So I just wanted to answer real quick on the, um, NDOT. We're already anticipating, I mean, our, our traffic engineer who works with NDOT all the time, that there will be some type of turn lane widening, um, already. I'll be honest, and I, and I've told the petitioners, there could be a chance if they come back and they say we need immediate, like all kinds of stuff, we can't do it, we would be out. And to be honest, to, to your effect, it's not gonna go as a residence. Nobody's gonna pay what we've got invested into it as a residence or what was purchased. And what you had to do structurally, we're still doing foundation. And so it would probably be sold to someone with deeper pockets, which would be probably corporate, number one. And then I did wanna address, we want as little parking as possible. So, and then what I'm saying is, when he drew those plans up, that was just based on whatever a site engineer, like if you've got this many square foot, he was saying that was more based on like county and what they require. Because let me tell you, asphalt's expensive. And so both of us, that would be the maximum, I don't even see that being the case. We're really doing whatever they say we have to do, so that, that's not us wanting to do, you know, anymore as far as the parking. That would be like minimal. Um, where my husband has another office on Arlington Avenue and we just have, we don't have big lights. Again, those would go through all the things, they're just lights on the building, just like he is at the Hilton Park right now is where he's at. Um, so, and as far as the two going into one, I'm gonna be honest, if you've not been a business person, when you have to share with another, it, it just makes it hard. We're friends now, we want to stay friends, and you get family involved, and it's just complicated. Um, we've kind of actually went that route before, and it's just easier to have two, two buildings. We're hoping, and again, to even maybe be able to expand our office, you know, further into that. That's why we were using that space, so.
So do you know the exact number of parking spaces you're gonna have, or that was one of my questions?
I'm not sure what's on the, um, basically the parking from the, the drawing right now went from the back of the barn to kind of the front of the barn. And then there was, and then there was like double. So, I mean, he's got, you know, if he's got six staff or so, they did have another parking for, and they were talking about enclosures. Those would all be dumpster pads and enclosures. Um, so, but again, we don't, both of us and the dentist, we would prefer, because right now, it's, it's gonna take a lot to get in right now.
And this question won't dictate anything, well, it could dictate, but I mean, so typically we have a choice of yes, no, or continue, because we don't have a full board. Would continuing it cause a problem for you, is a question for you? Like, we would continue it to the end of, to the July meeting or to the August meeting?
Um, I, I don't, I mean, we'll have our state plans and stuff by then, is it because of like seeing NDOT? I, I guess I would still-
It's a part, part could be that, could be part of our decision. Or the other part could be, well, if it's a four-three vote, then it doesn't go anywhere. We hit that five for yes or five for no, so then we would continue it.
I'd prefer to vote tonight, and then if we need to continue, we need to continue. I'm, there's just a little mental stuff I need to get off my head, or if we need to go a different route. And if we need to go a different route, just financially, we need to do that, so.
Well, it's a good project, it's just, it does take time and you have to go through a process. And everyone's gotta have the right to be heard.
Oh, absolutely.
And hear everybody's concerns and to get out, uh, to everybody what, what, and you, and you get to find out what their concerns are. Then you say, okay, let's put in these type of trees that grow fast and cause more barrier. So to be a good neighbor.
And I would say, I reached out to everyone and I've spoken to a few in person, because I did an email. The one person didn't reach, I'm sorry, I forget your name, ma'am. Erin, yeah, didn't reach out, we didn't make, I felt like I talked to everyone else, because I really do want it to be a win-win. I wanna make this work both ways and thought I had kind of addressed all those. So I'm definitely understand that, I understand the concerns. But that's, that's kind of where we're at, so, thank you.
Can I ask you a question about the traffic study? So NDOT probably directed you as to how they wanted that done?
Correct.
And did, was that based on the two uses only, or were there other uses that were being considered?
No, and they, they already told us, if we ever did any other use, you have to go back and get a whole new driveway permit and stuff. So this traffic study, and he made it very clear, is just, you know, for whatever this use zoning is all-
The two medical offices?
Correct.
Because the, the one that's gonna have the optometry business in it, that's, that's large, right? I mean, that's 10,000 square feet.
Well, it's actually, the, the bottom probably wouldn't be, upstairs is 6,000. And we're taking, we have plans for that, about 6,500 of it. Or not 6,500, 3,500. Um, he's in a 4,000 square foot building, he knows another practice again where-
Okay.
Hopefully with the growth of New Palestine, being able to-
Okay, so the traffic engineers' report is going to address improvements required for two medical office uses?
That's what they said, whatever that, and I don't, whatever the zoning, whatever is. And they said if you, not the zoning, because it's zoned, but kind of what, the use, yes.
The use, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And so the use of the current barn will be all medical office and it'll be fully occupied only by you, or you're leasing it out?
No, right now we're not leasing it out. We're, we're hoping in a year, my daughter's coming on, I actually have two daughters, the drop time is since one's in Ohio. We're hoping she comes back in a couple of years. Um, so we're just, and she wants to live in New Palestine and expand from there. So, now, I'm gonna be honest, if there was, if there was another medical that we could lease that out, I'm, wanna be very honest, I'm not saying that we wouldn't in the, the front of the space. We absolutely have no plans on doing that. But I don't wanna lie to the committee, I mean, if somebody came in a year or two and said, hey, I, you know, I don't know, I want an orthodontist or I want, an eye surgeon wants to see patients two days a week or something.
So just to confirm, you have a purchase and sale agreement for the second parcel that is, that this is contingent upon? Is that what's happening?
Part, same, sorry.
There's a purchase and sale agreement with the dentist for the second parcel? And this is a contingency for the purchase and sale agreement?
Oh yeah, we have, we're just, we're just, like I said, our big contingency is really the traffic study. Because we've talked to person that, they do developments and they've kind of put some numbers out there. And if, if they, if it's a big ask, then we've kind of just put some of those numbers down in it. So that's all contingent, which is why it's contingent on splitting, which is, as I'm finding out with all this stuff, everything's contingent on everything else, so, yeah.
Well, I guess the basis of my question is, I just wanted to make sure that any, anything that you're directed to do from an improvement standpoint is for the uses that you intend.
Absolutely.
And then, the concern is that a facility like that, if you started using it for other things, like parties, wedding venues or whatever, now all of a sudden the traffic dynamic is very different. And then you've put yourself and the county in a predicament then for safety issues.
From my understanding, if we wanted to change any of that, we would have to, we would have to go back-
Do it again.
And then they could approve or disapprove at that time. That was my understanding.
Okay. Okay, any more questions, comments, things like that? Alright, thanks.
I have a procedural question. Did we have an affirmative declaration of who the petitioner is here? I only asked for appeal time, if you should offer appeal time to the appellant. That's the only reason I ask.
So the-
Yeah, I, if we have an official determination-
We still have time, so.
Yeah.
I think offering it might be a good idea procedurally, just if-
Right.
We didn't have a determination of who, who would get the appeal, that's the real difference.
Right, okay.
See what I mean, it's just the appeal time, that's all.
Yeah, so, Erin, you, you wanted, did you want to have anything else to say? You had some time left, have you guys, either of you wanted to say anything else, you're sworn in? If you have any more rebuttal time?
About four minutes, so.
You've got about six, yeah. Come on up to the microphone. Make sure you're at the microphone, you're not gonna get picked up if you're not there.
I just didn't know if you had this drawing. So it's showing here, and it's written 54 parking places for two doctor's offices. And that just sounds like a lot. And the, the building, not so much, but this, these parking places that they're putting behind the second building are like right up against the property lines of the people in, in Shilmar Woods.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
And they don't have the-
I don't think we do have that.
They're saying just the middle, but it's not just the middle, it's, it's all the way around the back of that other building.
I do not think we have that drawing, but that was the drawing I was telling you earlier, I spent a lot of time-
That you had it, you had it at the other-
I was trying to figure out the park.
Well, you can, yeah, you can't, so.
No, you can't, yes, I'm sorry, you, no, we can't take it because of our rules and procedures, yeah.
You could describe it to us, you could describe it on the phone.
I don't, so I think that's kind of what we were-
This is a drawing from the packet.
The packet, so we didn't get this drawing from the packet?
Right.
But you seen this at your, when you were in the tech committee?
That's why I say, I spent a lot of time looking at this drawing.
But I don't think it was in our packet.
We don't have the parking part.
I don't think I saw the site plan in the packet.
But it was in ours today.
Yes. That's where they got that drawing, it's from the-
Just for clarification, aren't parking spaces dictated by the size of the building by the state?
Yes, there's.
Uh, well, the county has, we have a parking-
One space per 250 square feet.
For minimum or for minimum?
Yeah. And they could request a variance to that?
So that's kind of what we were talking about before, is the way they have it drawn is 54 parking spaces. The location that they're at right now is a shared building with four medical offices, businesses. And with the four businesses, there's only 58, I mean, it's like a couple more. So we, I, that's kind of what we're saying is, do we need this many? I mean, this is a lot of impermeable structure behind our houses, again, with the water and the drainage and everything right on the property line. Um, you can see from the drawing, the edge of the one parking lot is only 21 feet from our property line, um, which I know is within the setback limits. Um, but that barely, it doesn't even cover the root ball of the pine trees that are there. So, I mean, all of these things are kind of gonna affect how we see, our, you know, the, how we see our backyards, you know, our kids, where our kids can play, all that kind of thing, so.
Okay, alright, any more questions? Alright, thank you. So I think what-
Let's see that drawing.
So our, our course of action on this this evening, we've got, so it is appeal. So we'd be looking for an emotion to grant the appeal, which would mean to overturn the plat committee, or to not grant the appeal, which would mean to agree with the plat committee. We can also continue the item. We can also continue the item.
You're standing in the shoes of the-
Mm-hmm.
So, you're not really overturning the-
We are the platt committee.
You're taking the same steps that they would take.
So, it would be, it would not be a motion on the appeal. It would just be a motion to approve or deny the platt, okay? All right, so I'm corrected. So, it'd be a motion to approve the platt, or a motion to deny the platt, or a motion to continue the platt?
Can we, can I just get one more orientation question? So, if there wasn't a second parcel involved here, the building, the parking, the NDOT, everything would be done, it's the second parcel that's turning us, that is coming to here? Otherwise, everything would be done through the permitting process. It's the second parcel that's causing those problems?
Yeah.
Okay. Because, yes, it's CN, but it's the parceling, which is a preference for business purposes that's putting us into the, into the remonstrance situation.
Yeah, otherwise, it would have just, yeah, it wouldn't have come to a public hearing at all.
That approval by the, they did that, was that last month?
In this case, the platt committee approves the primary, it would be the primary platt approval, and then the secondary or final platt is administratively approved.
One of these dates. And they, and they did not impose-
So, on March 20th, 2025, the platt committee approved this with two conditions. One, that the county and state come to a resolution on right-of-way dedication, which this did appear at a commissioners' meeting. The commissioners did not sign off on the right-of-way, so that was kind of that. And two, that covenants address driveway access easement and maintenance agreement.
So, you're, you might consider your motion can also include those two conditions, if you lay those on, because you're, and then, just statute allows you, as a condition of primary approval of a platt, the commission or committee may specify the manner in which public ways shall be laid out, graded, and improved, provision for water, sewage, and other utility services, provision for lot size, number, and location, provision for drainage line, and a provision for other services as specified in the subdivision code. So, that's some consideration in-
Can you just repeat the number one, right-of-way dedication? What was the, it was, it's already been have a finding, because I don't want to-
The condition, that the county and state come to a resolution on right-of-way dedication.
That has been completed or not completed?
The county did not sign off on the dedication of right-of-way for, in this case.
So, that is a dead condition. It's already been considered, and if we put it as a condition, it would be, you can't act, act on that at this point. There's no action.
They've, they've taken no action. I don't know what else to say on that exactly.
So, they tried to dedicate 35 feet or something, and-
There was some, so basically, if the Board of Commissioners signed off on the dedication of right-of-way in this case, they would be owners of a strip of right-of-way on the edge of an NDOT facility, and there was some concern about the legality of that.
So, we, we shouldn't put it as a condition, because it's not available to seek?
We've addressed it with a setback that takes into account what would have been dedicated as right-of-way.
Okay, an additional setback beyond what we're seeing on these, on this paperwork?
It was the 90 feet building setback from center line. So, the, the secondary platt, or the, that was page one of the staff report, it has the correct platt.
Is Doe Creek Utilities going to be there when they build?
They will have to be. It's their sanitary sewer territory, yes.
That doesn't need to be a condition.
Allowed to do a manner in which public ways shall be laid out, graded, and improved out, subject to NDOT.
Yeah, we, I was thinking-
Your right turn issue?
We would have, I guess, they'd have to comply with all NDOTs. Yeah, I mean, I don't, does NDOT going to come back if they say, they could say, no, you can't do it, or you have to do these certain things? Is that typically how it works? Maybe Michael Long knows this better.
There will be recommendation, there will be mandates and recommendations? Okay. All right.
Yeah, and I'm not, not 100% sure how that goes, but the traffic engineer is independent, I believe, and so they submit the report, NDOT reviews it, and then they determine what they want to impose on the developer.
So, just as a standard of review, our standard here is, as a platt committee, technical committee, all the other committees have approved it, and then we make sure that they've approved it and followed their rules, and make sure that we're addressing any other zoning or comprehensive plan concerns. That's all, right? Because there's a standard of care that we can have, that's more expansive in our different roles.
That all the subdivision controls that apply to them are, boxes have been checked.
Okay.
Then you can apply, apply these conditions as well.
And landscaping has to meet with a commercial next to residential?
Yeah, use to use, yeah. All right, does anybody have a motion?
It's appealed, so what's the motion again?
You're basically, you mean it for the first time, it's as if the platt, you'd have to start over. If you wanted to incorporate one of the conditions that the platt committee already approved, you would want to add that to your motion, if you want, and you can impose other conditions.
I'll, I'll give it a shot. It's a list. Motion to approve with the following conditions. The conditions from the platt committee number two, covenants address driveway access easement and maintenance agreement, and amend that to include parking. Another condition would be that the NDOT study be completed, and all mandatory items be complied with, and any recommendations be reviewed with planning staff. That any required appearance before the BZA on use occur, which is just normal, but that they would consider seeking a variance in order to reduce the total number of parking if they're going into the BZA anyways. Comply with all utility and landscaping, and any other buffer requirements to ensure the privacy concerns of neighbors.
I'll second that. How'd you do, Dawn? Did you get it all?
I'm all right.
All right, when you're, when you're ready, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Oldham.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Oldham.
Yes.
Mr. Wiltridge.
Yes.
Mr. Fow.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, seven, seven to zero. All right, thank you very much, as we'll see you again with next phase, development plan. All right, thank you, guys. Thanks for coming out. Item number two, a rezone for Frank Minor, agriculture to residential.
What we have tonight is a petition for a rezone from agricultural to R1 for the subject property located at 10257 North Alfred Road to Fortville Address, to Vernon, yes. All right, so this would be a rezone of 4.3 acres from Ag to R1, and this is in order for Mr. Minor to pursue a major subdivision. What he has found himself is, is the fourth, basically, his lot would be lot four. He wants to build a new house on a non-conforming lot, or a lot of record. So, what you're allowed to do there without plating is you're allowed to add on, you're allowed to, to build a new barn. This is our little old farmhouse rule. So, it allows the, the farmstead or the home to be cut off, and something else to happen on the rest of the property, be that continued farming, or further subdivision, or whatnot. This was a later amendment to our ordinance, and it threw me for a loop, to be quite honest. Looking, so, I'll get into that. But what we have here now is Mr. Minor's lot at the front of this lot, at the front of this agricultural field, and then behind him, we have Brook's Edge 1, which is a three-lot minor subdivision. Look at the history of this lot. In 2002, it lost its lot of record status when the 14-and-a-half-acre field behind it was separated from the, from the home site, due to that commissioner's rule. This leaves basically just an illegal, non-conforming lot, because it's not platted, once the home itself is demolished, or would be demolished. In 2024, 25, what we saw was, in 24, 25, Brook's Edge 1, a three-lot minor, was approved on the remaining 14-and-a-half acres. And I go into some information on this, but basically, this really would have been splits two, three, and four, just because it is exempt, and I went down the rabbit hole on this particular subject, but Mr. Minor's lot should have been considered the first split, meaning that Brook's Edge 1 should have only been allowed to have two lots. That is a mistake on my part. We missed that because we just saw a 10-acre-plus farm field exempt from plating. We didn't go back to see what the original tract was as of 2002, which is that January 1st, 2002, is the magic date we use to determine, is this a lot of record or not? We saw 10-acre, 10-acre-plus lot exempt from plating, go for it, plat it, not thinking about, well, what did this look like back at that lot of record or original tract date, seeing that, well, Mr. Minor's lot was actually part of this as well, and should have been considered the first subdivision, or first lot. Would have only allowed, then, two more to max out your minor subdivision maximum. Anything beyond that would have required a major subdivision, which is where we are tonight instead, and Mr. Minor now, who bought the old, original homestead up at front, is left with the brunt of, basically, my department's error. At least, that's how I feel about it. I feel very, very bad about how this has worked out, but I am very glad that I've had the opportunity to do the research on this particular topic. So, and we talked to Mr. Minor about what his options were with this parcel, and he's got a beautiful four-acre parcel. He wants to start fresh with a new house, and so he is moving forward with the request to demolish the house and do whatever he needs to build a new home on this site. All right, now I'm going to walk you through the reasoning that led me to tonight's staff recommendation. So, our subdivision control ordinance has this section up at the very beginning called classification and compliance, and it reads as follows. Platt required. All land to be, to be divided shall be categorized and platted, either as minor subdivision or major subdivision, consistent with the definitions in, then it goes to our subdivision definition section. B, building permit. No lot in a subdivision shall be sold, no permit shall be issued to erect any building upon land in a subdivision, and no building shall be erected in a subdivision unless and until a final subdivision platt has been approved and recorded, and the improvements required by the plan commission in connection therewith have been constructed or guaranteed as herein provided. The provision, C, the provisions of A and B, so platt required and building permit must occur on recorded platt, or on a recorded lot, shall not apply to accessory structures and building alterations. That's why you can remodel your old house, and you can add a barn. Those are your two things you can do. So, if we go to then, the A, platt required, refers to 155.004 definitions. We get into the definition of subdivision. So, subdivision is defined as, division of a parcel into land, into two or more lots, parcel sites, units, plats, or interests for the purpose of offer, sale, lease, or development, either on the installment plan or upon any and all other plans, terms, and it goes on, including re-subdivision. Subdivision includes the division of land zone for residential and non-residential uses. Following kinds of division of existing parcels of land are herein called exempt divisions. These divisions are exempt from the plating provisions of this chapter. Exempt divisions must be one of the following types of division. A division of land into two or more tracts, all of which, all of which are at least 10 acres in size. So, that's what gets your 10-plus acre parcels out of plating in order to pull a building permit, because they're exempt, then, from A and B above. And then it goes through a number of other situations that may apply. And then we go down through major subdivision and minor subdivision. So, and major subdivision just says, any subdivision not classified as a minor subdivision. So, minor subdivision, the division of a single lot, tract, or parcel of land, or part thereof, into not more than three lots, tracts, or parcels of land, including the remainder of the original tract, any one of which is less than 10 acres, for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of transfer of ownership, or construction of residential, commercial, or industrial purposes. However, this definition shall not include division of land for agricultural purposes only. A minor subdivision shall not involve any new street or extension of local government facilities, or the creation of any public improvements. Then we go into, what's the intent of our agricultural district? So, Ag, district summary is, agricultural district is intended to provide locations for Ag operations and related land uses, reduce conflicts between residential and Ag uses, preserve viability of Ag operations, and limit development in areas with minimal infrastructure. Single-family dwellings are permitted in the A district, except that major residential subdivisions are not permitted. And that is why we're here tonight, to see if Mr. Minor can get a rezone to R1. So, that's the backstory of how we end up here, because plating is required in order for him to build a house on his lot, which is, while it was really the first split, is winding up as the fourth. All right. Now, 155.009 in the subdivision control ordinance is waiver of requirements. The plan commission is hereby authorized to waive any or all requirements of this chapter when a literal enforcement of- chapter when a literal enforcement of the chapter would result in unnecessary hardship and when the waiver will not be contrary to the public interest." So, I don't usually plead with this as an option, but tonight, I am. Such a waiver would allow Mr. Minor the ability to build a new home without, and I would require, I guess, or I would request a waiver of the requirements of SCO or subdivision control, 155006, classification and compliance. This would allow Mr. Minor the ability to build a new home without plating. So, such a waiver would allow Mr. Minor the ability to, okay, this is exactly what I just said, build a new home without requiring that his lot be platted, which would in turn mean that his lot does not need to be rezoned, allowing him to withdraw his rezone petition and pursue a building permit, which is his actual goal here. "Requiring Mr. Minor to rezone and plat as a major subdivision is an unnecessary hardship, especially when we did not catch that his lot should have been counted as the first split from the original tract." "Allowing Mr. Minor a waiver from the subdivision control ordinance, and they're permitting him to build a new house in place of this old one, is beneficial to the public interest for the following reasons. The new house will meet setback requirements off of Alfred Road, protecting the thoroughfare and making driving safer. A new house will be nicer, adding to the assessed value of properties in the county, and also fitting in better with the other homes that are behind this or will be very soon. A new septic will be, will be compliant with health department requirements." Other options if the waiver is not granted. The zoning ordinance gives guidance for rezone petitions. Possible actions would include a favorable recommendation, unfavorable recommendation, no recommendation, or continuance. And decision criteria should be based on the comprehensive plan and any other applicable adopted planning studies or reports, current condition and character of current structure and uses in the district, desired use, the most desirable use for which the land is adapted, property values, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and responsible growth and development. Staff would recommend an unfavorable recommendation to the board of commissioners of the proposed rezone for the current, from the current zone, which is agricultural, to R1. The area behind this that just got subdivided into a minor subdivision and the land at the south of that, which is now also a minor subdivision, all of that is still zoned agricultural. So it seems, once again, an unnecessary hardship that in this case, we would require Mr. Minor to rezone to R1 for this reason. Also, any further rezone of this area invites in more rezones of an area that has shown as future rezone area, not ready to go right now, rezone to suburban residential. There is no utility in this area yet. This is all still on septic. Rezoning to R1 kind of opens the floodgate, so it is not representative of responsible growth and development. Rezoning of the area should not occur until utilities are available. And that's the end of my very passionate presentation.
I was going to say, can we just vote on the waiver now and move, or do we have to go through the process?
Let's go through the process.
All right, let's make it quick.
Yeah.
So, the advertisement was done for the rezone.
Right.
Not done for a request on the waiver.
I was, my understanding was that that is my recommendation as staff and that, basically, the waiver would mean that he did not need to do the rezone, which would pull that whole petition. Is that, and I might be...
I think we have to act on the rezone, right? So we have to do, we'll have to do, at least, I don't know how we deal with the waiver request, though.
If it's unfavorable, it goes to Commissioner.
Unless we have a specific finding that an application can be, we would waive it. We could have, in the motion, we can waive it, right?
To waive.
To waive the timeframe.
Waiving.
If we have a motion procedurally, if we anticipate that we would waive the timeframe, and then we make a recommendation with the unfavorable, that the waiver occurs with the actual subdivision ordinance. The notice, can the note, the notice is my concern, too. Like, what notice is required under 155.009?
Well, we can, we can hear from the petitioner, but it seems like we have to do something with the rezone and then they, and then they...
I get that, it's the waiver.
You come back with the, with the waiver, though, but you're saying that they, that it's still the same case, right? I mean, the waiver's different enough, they shouldn't have to wait a year to...
Right, but I'm seeing...
The problem is, there's nothing in 155.009 that identifies the, who the requister is. It could, the planning commission can, can, at the request of, of planning, at the planer. So it doesn't require, it's not within the normal provisions of notice. It was like a surrante.
Back again with a different...
I think the question is, do we have to provide notice about the waiver requirements? That's the question.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't know the answer to that. That's why I was kind of wondering if the petitioner likes the idea of the waiver, maybe they withdraw and then re-advertise for the waiver next month, maybe.
I don't know that, I would like to see it in interpretation, if you can notice on a waiver. But you can't request a waiver. The planning commission is authorized to waive.
Not a hearing item necessarily.
Yeah. That's what I mean, it's a, and does that need to appeal? It's not, it's not a favorable or unfavorable recommendation.
I don't, I don't even know that it's a hearing item, but it's probably an agenda item. So it probably shows up on our, it needs to show up as like other business or something, right? So it, like, I think that, I think if Mr. McDaniel was here, he would want to, he would want to see requests for waiver on the agenda, I think, is probably what he would say.
The preference is there, but, but does the, does the ordinance require it? That's the question.
Oh, yeah, I don't know that it does.
Yeah.
It's probably silent on it, actually.
Probably even does.
I don't know that I ever have either.
Can't be a staff recommendation at a regular hearing, I mean, as, I mean...
I think...
I guess that's why, I guess that's why I'm confused about what you're saying, is like, so, we're having, I mean, the staff is making recommendations, so she can't recommend that, we can't accept that as an option?
I think that if it, I think that if they had come in and there wasn't the confusion on the rezoning, I think that if she had thought of this earlier, before it was advertised as a rezoning, she would have said, "I think you need to get a waiver from this section from the plan commission that would have shown up on our agenda tonight, tonight as other business."
I did, and the understanding I got from it was that it was not, basically, that public notice of it was not required, because I asked about this last month. So, once again, that's a little, I feel like a little bit on me if this is not done right.
This is the one we talked about last month.
What are we, we have to know what the waiver, what we're asking for a waiver for. Are you asking for a waiver from having to rezone?
No, I'm asking for a waiver from 155.006.
Right.
And that is the classification and compliance section specifically, yeah, well, A and B, which is plat required, requiring that all land to be divided, shall be classified as either a minor sub or a major sub, and then B, that a building permit not be issued if it's not classified as a major sub or a minor sub. Basically, allowing him to, just like if you had a non-conforming lot, let's say Mr. Minor's house burns down. He would be given a year to build that house back on the same exact footprint, whether or not it complied with our zoning ordinance, so long as he could still pull a septic permit or something like that. But planning and zoning would allow him a year to do that, whether or not it was compliant or not. So this would kind of put him in that same situation where, hey, you can demolish your house, you can build a new house, but it just has to be according to the setbacks and pulling a new, a new septic permit and a new driveway cut through the highway department and a lovely, nice new home and all the benefits of it, without having to plat as a major subdivision after he goes through the trouble of rezoning.
So, how far did this, this, our agenda reads, "Rzone 4.349, et cetera, et cetera, and waiver from subdivision control ordinance." That's what our agenda says.
Oh, yeah, good point, yep. Who it is on there.
That's posted, that's noticed. So in lieu of a finding on the noticed action for rezone, we would take a concurrent action on the waiver because of the same, it's the sameness, it's the same, right, we're, we wouldn't independently handle one without the other? We could do a waiver independently, another meeting if we wanted to, okay. But is this proper notice in the agenda?
No, because it was sent out more than a month ago, because he was here last month.
So the wa, I'm sorry, so the waiver was in the notice, the...
The waiver was in the agenda, I believe at my request. Dawn included that in the agenda because we knew that would be talked about.
Okay.
The waiver that was not requirement to rezone.
Correct. Yeah, that's very correct.
Zone is really not the...
It's before us, we probably have to take action, but maybe we should just go ahead and proceed through the normal...
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I was just trying to decide if, if the petitioner needs to be thinking before they come up if they want to withdraw their petition. And if they withdraw their petition, have they withdrawn the ability to request this waiver?
What if we preserve it? We say, "We will preserve your ability to withdraw after we've heard." We will preserve your withdrawal, you know, ability, I mean, we would need to also preserve it because we're not a full board. We would need to also preserve their ability in consideration of the subdivision, subdivision control and its waiver. All three of those, we would proceed with our normal agenda, letting them know that at the end of the agenda, they can still withdraw for those reasons.
Can they, can they withdraw after we've completed the hearing agenda?
I don't hear a vote.
Okay. All right.
Just because I couldn't hear you.
Oh.
I can hardly hear you. So, I just want to make sure. So, they would withdraw their, their rezone, and then we would put them at the end of the agenda tonight so that they could receive the waiver? Or is that what you're saying? No?
My recommendation is that we proceed with the hearing on the rezone request, with the assurance to the petitioner that at the end of the normal hearing for this agenda item, but before we vote, they can withdraw either the rezone application because of the procedural issue or because we're not a full board. And I would, I would say that because the waiver of subdivision control ordinance was put into the agenda and considered, we would have proper ability to consider the waiver, but we would have to have that separately considered than the rezone application. So it could, so rezone is different than subdivision.
Mm-hmm. Separate action, okay. All right. Keeping it lively tonight, so, all right. Is somebody here, Mr. Minor here to speak? Okay.
And Kayla, it always makes it difficult, because we used the old code for years and years and years, even after we did the new code. And so there was a lot of confusion there.
All right, come on up, let's, where are you in? Oh, you are sworn in.
Well, Kayla's made it easy on me, I think. First of all, I'm here representing Frank and Jenny Minor, they're with us tonight. They live in Fishers currently, have two children. They purchased this 4.359 acres in hopes to build a home on the existing property that has a house now. So, bottom line is, whatever's the best way for them to get a building permit to build a new home...
You want to do that?
Where we're at, right?
Let's do that.
So, I mean, whether it's rezone, whether it's waiver, they're all in agreement to that. We've already discussed that. So, whether it's withdrawing the petition, I just want to do it the right way, and I'm not legal counsel, so I don't want to ever think that I'm an attorney. So, this leads us down the right direction so they can get a building permit. The existing house that they have now sits within 40 feet of the center of the road. And if we go to plating, which was recommended, that house would sit in the right way of the road. So a new house seems logical to build further back in to meet the requirements. I would say, Kayla, I don't know that she is, it was a mistake. I think the interpretation of the ordinance that we're interpreting now is whether a 10-acre tract was an exempt tract or not. There's been several cases where 10 acres have been divided, maybe even often an 80-acre field, you had eight tracts, and those have been divided into three lots. So, that's been the normal in the case for the last 23, 24 years, and all of a sudden, it's different now. And Kayla does, after reading this, I think her interpretation's correct. But I hate to think that we've done it wrong for 23 years because there was another interpretation. I really believe that's where we're at. So, not getting into a big, long discussion, you guys have been here a long, long time tonight, so. I think there is some thought process, process out there that the land use is residential, so the zone is, the residential is not the worst-case scenario. Because I know that one month down the road, you guys can't use a precedent because it's case by case. Rezonings are case by case, not by precedent. So, just because this would be rezoned residential, doesn't mean the next guy coming in could get residential. I mean, it's case, this is, if there was a case in the county, this would be the case to say, "We're going to rezone this to residential because that's what it is, it's been there." This house was built in 1941. So, there's a part of me that says, "Well, let's take it to the commissioners and find out what they would say." But I don't want to wait a year to file a waiver if that's the case. So, I'll just answer questions at this point. I think it's a, it's a slam dunk if we can get to the right way to travel to get to that.
I guess the only question I have is, if we do the waiver, then we have a lot. Okay, so, what kind of lot is it? You know, I mean, if later on, somebody comes in and says, "I want to add a barn," they go, "Well..."
Well, you know, there have, there would have to be some commitments made, and I don't, or suggestions made that it's a lot of record at that point, maybe a non-conforming lot of record. I, I would argue the fact that it's a lot of record.
That's what I'm asking.
Right now, I would argue that, but I don't want to get into a long, drawn-out argument tonight over it, because it was eight, there was 19 acres.
How would we be able to be a lot of record, on the record?
I, I really don't believe we should be here anyway. But it was 19-some acres beforehand, and 10 acres was sold off. But now that Kayla's brought that to light, should we have been able to just get a building permit three or four months ago? I feel that's the case, but interpretations are made for different times. So, Byron, you make a good point, without plating it, is it a lot of record? With the waiver, it sounds like it can be a lot of record with a waiver.
Any more questions?
You would, you would, you're okay with a waiver? And the waiver only applying to the subdivision?
We would be more than happy with a waiver.
And 155.006 is the only subdivision ordinance? And 155.006 is the only subdivision ordinance section that would be waived?
Right. So if I need to.
Only for purposes of this permit, this permit.
Correct.
Got it? And so that would protect us longer term, would be for purposes of this permit? That applies to the classification of a plat required in building permit? Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right. No more questions? All right. Do we have anybody who wants to speak in opposition to the rezoning? All right. We have no opposition, so any discussion? Did we learn anything?
Part of the motion that, of the lot, it would also be a lot of record or not?
I can't, I believe so.
I don't know how we would.
If the motion includes that it's a lot of record, can that be effectuated? Can, can we make that happen?
I like what she said about the waiver applying to this permit only. And would that be as a, is that officially what we call the commissioner's rule? Lots is lots of record? And that would still protect his ability to modify the structure or build a barn? That would still be protected under C.
So prior to my client withdrawing the petition for rezone, will the waiver be voted on tonight?
Yeah, that's, that was the next question, was if they withdraw their application, they would have to do that prior to us contemplating this waiver, I think.
We can do the waiver first.
But I think we can vote on it tonight.
We can do the waiver first and then it can be withdrawal without us voting on this rezoning. And it doesn't have to go to the, the planning, or it doesn't have to go to the commissioners if it's withdrawn. And our motion on the waiver could allow for a shortened timeframe for reapplication if something happens with the waiver.
I mean, I just, everybody watching is probably wondering, what's Scott doing, looking on his phone the whole time? It's like I'm reading the whole code section. Yeah, it's silent on whether, whether it has to be, I don't see anything where it talks about notice to the public. That would make common sense to me that what should have been done was, from my interpretation, I don't know, she may disagree with me, but other attorneys may disagree with me. But it's, it seems like what should have been done is they should have said, hey, thanks for your application. I don't think, I think the best way to do this is to do this waiver. And then you would have said, okay, that sounds great. So then she would have advertised it and said, we're coming in to just do this waiver, this is my recommendation. We, as the planning commission, have to go through it. And then we would have voted on the waiver. And that probably would have been the best and cleanest way to do it. Because it is silent on notice and all that, it doesn't talk about it.
I, I would suggest that you ask if there's any other, if there was remonstrance tonight.
I did ask, I think, didn't I? Did I ask? I thought I asked.
Yeah.
And there is not. So they've been notified two months in a row, obviously, because we failed to notify them in time last time.
Yeah. And I think as for board discussion, if we're, if you are wrapped, I think there's a policy statement that we need to make, that any decision that we make here would be based upon the, the facts and prevailing criteria and not about any staff action. I think there's a policy that we are not using a waiver for correction of what we perceive or do not perceive to be staff action. That's inconsequential. It's that this is a result that just doesn't make sense and we're utilizing the waiver format because there's five criteria that we can rely upon. Just a statement.
Okay. All right, so I think.
Do you entertain a motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, let's take a motion.
Okay. I move that we waive the subdivision ordinance 155.006 for purposes of the subject permit and have any results be the record or the commissioner's rule. And that should the petitioner withdraw their application for the noticed and subject rezone, that we would waive any waiting time for reapplication. Get it all?
Is there a lot of record in there?
Lot of, oh, yeah, that's the commissioner's rule. Lot of rec, I believe that's what, just an amendment to my motion, a lot of record and a commissioner's rule is the same thing.
And it, and it pertains just to the building permit for the new home, right?
We're done with it, I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded to waive the requirements of 155.006 of the subdivision control ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. So to withdraw, I'll just ask the petitioner what they want to do with their rezoning petition.
We would like to ask the planning commission to withdraw our petition for rezoning for the Frank Minor rezone.
So moved. Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the withdrawal of the rezone petition for the Frank Minor subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Success. Good. All right, thanks. All right, item number four is Mr. James Elgood. That's, this is a, this is a Shirley petition, so what we'll be dealing with tonight is a recommendation to the Shirley Town Council, not to our Board of Commissioners, and this is a rezone petition.
Yes, sir, if you know our password, we took so long. I'm on my best behavior.
So tonight we have a, the Elgood rezone. James Elgood is requesting a rezone in the town of Shirley. Subject property is located at 212 South First Street. The petition would rezone approximately .43 acres from our 3.5 to CN commercial neighborhood, which would then allow for a small appliance repair service business to occur in what was a church. Elgood has included a statement of intent, which I'll allow him to discuss if he would like to. This, there is a listing for this site online, but you can see the interior of this is, it's a church, it's a one big open space. Got kind of a cool Ponsett hut style roof. I believe it's special pinball repair, from what I was hearing, so feel free to ask some questions about that.
Wrong thing again. Should we find it?
District intent of CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District is intended to provide convenience, goods, services, and amenities within close proximity to residential areas. This district is further intended to permit the development of traditional mixed-use neighborhood centers, which would include second-story residential above commercial. This district would be protected from non-neighborhood serving land uses such as big box or more regional retail uses. So this is really an ideal rezone for what is a residential area in Shirley, especially one that already has a church structure on it. The decision criteria, again, once again, taking into consideration comprehensive plan, current conditions and character, desired use, property values, and responsible growth and development. Really, this seemed like a, a great reuse of the site as it is and fit into this neighborhood. So for those reasons, staff recommends to the town of Shirley, favorable recommendation from our 3.5 to CN commercial. This is still in the town of Shirley overlay as well. I believe it is already, actually, I know because I met Mr. Elgood at a town council meeting, so I know it has already been to the Shirley town. I will take any questions or turn it over to the petitioner.
Questions? Okay. All right, somebody here with the petitioner? Come, come on up. We'll swear you in.
Swear of oath when it comes to perjury that the test.
Yes, ma'am. My name is James Christopher Elgood, and it's E-L-L-E-G-O-O-D. Yeah. Great. By the way, everybody calls me Chris. My, yeah, my father's name was Jim and my mother didn't want me to be little Jim. So, there you go. So, so, yeah, so in my statement of intent, basically, this is a 2,400 square foot building. It's not a house. You know, it doesn't, it's not a house structure, right? But I believe it was encompassed when the, when the zoning was actually set up. This building was built in the 30s, so probably predated, I assume, the zoning that was there. Anyway, I've met, I've talked to Mr. Riggs and sent him my letter, and we have a purchase agreement in place contingent on it being rezoned as commercial neighborhood. The facility is really kind of great. Basically, it's got a nice double door in the front, so it'll be very easy to move a pinball in and move a pinball out whenever we need to. And then the intention is, because it's a nice, large facility, I want to basically kind of expand my modification business, where I, you know, basically make modifications for pinballs. That's a big thing. And, you know, new lights, also people build little houses to go inside their pinballs. It's, it's a whole thing. Anyway, and, and I think this would just be really great. The building doesn't have adequate electrical, so I have a whole laundry list of things that need to be done to it. It has some deferred maintenance. But like, for example, the electrical is, my electrician friend said that basically a lot of churches are like this. They have, you know, splices where they shouldn't, and they have, you know, the, the box is not great. And so I've actually already talked to him about going in and running a whole new service conduit and putting outlets in the places where it needs to be. I'm planning on not changing the structure at all, with the exception if I need to, once we seal the brick, if we need to, we may need to paint it. And the only consideration I have there is a nice gray, you know, something that doesn't pop out of the neighborhood at all. So, any questions?
Is it going to be open to the public so we can come and see this, how this works?
So let me see this. Actually, great question. It is not going to be open to the general public.
Okay.
But of course, by, by appointment, you could come anytime.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's not a retail store. It's not going to be fixing washers and dryers. It's going to be basically, like I said, basically, you know, bring in a pinball, work on it. I, I do this at my own house already, but I have outgrown all of my space. And so this would be like a way for me to kind of extend my hobby and basically build a business around it.
Are the neighbors going to be complaining about the ding-ding whistle-whistle?
Oh, actually, I don't expect that they'll actually hear that.
Tried to be serious about that.
It's a, it's a, sure. And, you know, presumably people were singing in it before. But no, I don't think you'd be able to hear it. In my own house, I can, if I'm on the third floor, I can't hear somebody playing in the basement.
Okay.
Yep. And any tools or anything we use would be, this is all essentially desktop manufacturing, you know, so 3D printers, a laser cutter, no, no giant machinery or anything like that. Maybe I'll use a drill once in a while, but nothing that you would find offensive in a house.
Okay.
It's really especially art, you know, it's like coming back and people are trying to find people like you.
Yeah, so actually, it's kind of funny. Basically, pinball repair people don't make house calls anymore.
Ah.
And I'm not sure I really want to do that either. But if someone will bring a machine to the place, I'll certainly shop it and fix it up for them. Yep. Most people are like that now, like Doc Pinball in, here in Greenfield. And, you know, you can bring something to him, but he traditionally doesn't come to the house anymore. He used to. My father-in-law used to have him come to his house and fix up his pins. And, well, now I have to do it, right? Because it's my father-in-law. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, actually, it's really kind of nice. I've been doing pinball and arcade machines. Arcade machines are the gateway drug to pinball. I can remember when I thought $50 was a lot to pay for an arcade machine. Now, if I could find one for 50 bucks, like you'd buy it sight unseen, right? The market has dramatically shifted. We're kind of going into a post-peak where they've produced, Stern produces new pins every year. They've kind of saturated the market a little bit. But, but no, it's, I've been doing this for about 15 years. I'm one of the co-founders of the Hoosier, oh, this is so bad, the Hoosier Arcade Coin Op Collector Society, because we wanted to say Hacks is what we wanted to say. Anyway, but we probably have about 400 or 500 members now. And then I go to, I belong to another group called Indy Pinball, which by the way, you should look up on Facebook, come play pinball, it's 10 bucks, play for hours. And it's in a wonderful Masonic building down in Indy. And anyway, it's a, but you, you know, it's a really great hobby. You meet a lot of nice people. Most of my friends are pinball people now. You know, so, anyway, but that's kind of the plan that I have for it. But like I said, there's a list of improvements that need to be made. The roof needs to be remediated, the electrical, basically, we're going to start over and make it up to code, more, most importantly, but also with the electrical where I need it, and we're going to improve the service from 100 to 200 amp. And then there's just a whole litany of deferred maintenance that needs to be done. And, but Mr. Riggs and I have come to an agreement as soon as, as soon as this gets rezoned.
So, so Kayla, with the rezone, anything like landscaping, different things like that would only come in if we had a building permit for an addition or something like that to the building, right? So as long as he's not adding on, he shouldn't have any, any requirements that needs to upgrade the site, upgrade the parking, upgrade the landscape or anything like that?
As he changes the site, he needs to bring it into compliance with current code, but if he's not changing anything on the outside, like parking or remodel or whatever, as he goes through that, then he'll comply, apply for permits, and that'll go through all the departments, yeah.
All right.
Hey, although there's, although this is a great use, and I don't think anybody has an issue with it, is there any uses in commercial neighborhood that we should be concerned about with this, around this area that we should exclude?
We discussed originally the commercial community rezone category, but that had a lot of uses that were concerning. So for that reason, we did find this use category in CN that worked really well, and a lot of the other uses in CN, like the use district explains, are very much meant to be in a neighborhood setting. So I don't have any additional comments, but if the town of Shirley wants to speak at all about that, I would definitely defer to them.
Okay.
Yeah, my experience, meeting with the town council, they very, they seemed very enthusiastic and they very quickly passed like a, like a resolution, you know, that they, well, that they supported my use of it.
Okay. Any more questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody that wants to speak in opposition to this rezone? Anybody from town of Shirley that has any comment?
You got the same shirt on as Wendell.
They might know each other.
I do.
Teresa Hester, H-E-S-T-E-R. I am the clerk treasurer for the town of Shirley, also Wendell Hester's wife.
We got lots of questions.
This was brought before the town council last month, two months ago, maybe. When was it last?
Two months.
Was it two months ago?
I think so.
I was going to say, I thought, I thought it was two months ago. And council was very for the, the rezoning and all of that because, to be quite honest, the neighborhood is, if you look, cornered across, there was a car wash there at one time, which has now been bought and made into a garage, but so, which is still, is that's commercial neighborhood? But so, which is still commer, is that's commercial neighborhood or community commercial? Yeah, it's CC across, it's kind of diagonal across from where this location is. But, uh, to be able to have a use of a building and another person in, uh, the community that would bring other people in, even if it's just to bring a pinball machine, it's still bringing someone in to look at our community. And that's what we, you know, the council would, would like and appreciate because we want people to come in and see our community. So that, it was very highly recommended and, uh, approved, council was in approval.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? No? You get some rebuttal time as well, if you want that. If you've got anything else to say, nothing else, all right. So what we have again, it's a, this is our, um, recommendations, favorable, unfavorable, no recommendation, continue. But this is to the town council of Shirley.
Make a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Shirley town.
A second.
Okay, moved a second in for a favorable recommendation to the Town of Shirley. So Don, when you're ready, can you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
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 All right, thank, thank you. Thanks for hanging around so late. Yeah. That concludes our hearing items this evening. So we'll move on to, we've got two other business items, a UDO update and a quality of place plan update.
Ask questions about Wendell?
Oh, we can add that to other business.
Other business?
I just don't know that I want to know the answers.
Is Wendell just quiet at home?
I've got this vision of Wendell in my mind. I don't want it changed.
So Shirley's also getting a hat shop. I just got the change of use for it today. And, uh, Teresa just mentioned that it's for, also has some online use and also some office space.
You said a hat shop?
Hat shop, yeah. And it's like, like in some of the downtown, uh, core building that is currently vacant, I believe. So that's awesome. And, um, also, if you haven't tried out their new pickleball courts, you should. It's amazing. And I've played twice there already, so.
The plan commission is going to have a pickleball tournament.
New pal has, new pal just did theirs too. They just finished their pickleball courts and new, right, Mike?
All right, well, I just wanted to, yeah, Shirley's doing some cool stuff, it sounds like. All right, um, have we moved on to?
UDO update.
UDO update. All right, I have given you all a document from Vanderwall and Associates that I've been hanging on to in hopes that I would get a little bit more polished version of it, um, to hand to you all. But this is a findings, excuse the draft form, hopefully Meredith, she'll probably send me the finalized, beautified version tomorrow. But, uh, just in a quick, it's just an overview of our UDO draft and how it aligns with the comprehensive plan. So, uh, this was called for several months ago at this point. And just goes over the, the good, the bad, the ugly, things that could be tweaked a little bit or things that are great. I'm just giving it to you guys to read over and, um, kind of answer any of your questions about the direction we're going with that UDO.
So Vanderwall drafted this?
Yes.
Vanderwall drafted the UDO?
No, Vanderwall drafted the comp plan.
Okay. And they were, they were on our evaluation, they were on our evaluation for engagement for the UDO or no?
No.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
No, they reviewed this once the draft was complete.
This different from what you were working on? I know, but you were gonna, you were, I thought you said you were working on something that you were looking at the state?
She's done a legal review.
Legal review.
Legal review.
She was looking at the statutes.
Legal review. That's different from?
Yes.
This, right? Yeah, okay.
They were engaged to do. Review to see.
So, yeah, so that's, I think, kind of one of the plan commission's jobs with the UDO is to make sure that, to certify that it adheres to the comp plan. And so that's what this is.
No, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I remember hearing.
So we're giving this to the UDO preparers to say, can you incorporate these and tell us yes or no to each?
I really would like the chance to go through it a little more fine-tuned, but I did want to share the findings with you guys so that you are very aware. And yes, I do plan to share that with, uh, GRW TSC.
And just, so, so by example, are we going to preserve the ability of the planning commission to, I don't know, waive a subdivision ordinance 155.06 in the new document? Is that, who does that? Is it this? Is that you? Is that us as a planning commission?
That's the UDO.
Like, that's my favorite new thing. So how do we make sure it's in, how do we make sure it's in somewhere?
Well, I, I would prefer that, um, GRW do, kind of tell us what's in and what's out. That at our request, but that was kind of. How do we, they're kind of like saying, it's up to you if you tell us.
So the.
She brought up a good thing with me last, uh, last meeting too, that perhaps an AI. That's a lot to go through to try to figure out what, what is in and what is not.
So the review that your office was doing, my understanding and what's been weighing on my mind that was concerning, what I thought I was hearing was that there were things that were done over the several years, ordinances changed, things like that, that never really became codified. Like, they weren't online. There's things that you, if you went onto American Legal, you wouldn't find certain things that we changed in our zoning ordinance. And so GRW maybe didn't know all of those things and all of those things maybe didn't find their way to the UDO draft.
So, um, is passed, like, there would be some ordinances that may not have been codified yet. In-between stage that haven't made it to American. Our more recent one.
Yeah. And that was my concern and I, I just want to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
So the approach, I believe, and. So starting with our current code and updating it with. They started with a fresh. And said, we will put back in whatever things you want. That was my concern was, how do we know? That's probably lots of things. We. Lot of time. How do we get, go through that process to know? What. Whose job is it to go through? And kind of like say, do you want this in?
I think, yeah, and I think that the direction to them is that they, they need to make sure that. I'd rather be subtractive, right? I'd want everything that is on the books to be in to start with. And then we could take out if we needed to. Yeah, so, yeah, so it'd be subtractive rather than additive. Is that possible or are we too far gone?
I think my question to you would be, do you think that the steering committee accomplished that?
So that's, yeah, that's a good point. That's where it got a little confusing is the steering committee might have given them, a different direction maybe than what was there. But I, so I think we need to just, I think they probably need to make sure that everything was there and then highlight anything that the steering committee might have asked to change maybe. Because that's where we were kind of getting before, is like, highlight the changes. And they were like, we can't highlight the changes because the format's different. It's like, okay, well, give us a list of the changes. Well, you have the list of changes. It's like, no, I don't have the list of changes. You have. So we were getting this, all this back and forth. So I don't know if we even need to start, we need to do a new agreement with them or something where they can just say, this is the UDO, this has everything in it, this is everything we heard in the steering committee, so these are the decisions that need to be made. I don't know if that's possible.
Can I ask, a new agreement would, they should be experienced in producing these and know that it has to go in front of a board and they have to coach the board on exactly what those are. So we're reconciling the comp plan, the steering committee, existing ordinance, their template ordinance, new laws. And so all of those things, that, that there needs to be, that they should be experienced in a mechanism to give us an indication of what we should and should. I mean, if we have a favorite thing we want to preserve, we should be, they should be able to say, hey, you know, this is where it was and this is where, where it is now. I mean, a new agreement seems like we were paying for something that was not quite expertise.
Have you taken a look at the draft ordinance to see if it's user-friendly?
I don't, I, I could, I mean, for me, yes. And I could care less about user-friendliness. I care about. Actually, yeah, does it agree with the comprehensive plan? Does it, uh, capture all of the pending ordinances and existing ordinances that we want to preserve? Does it listen to the steering committee and, um, any new laws? I, I mean, and finally, they may need to use their own template, but they have to give us a mechanism to understand those. I mean, it's more of the content. Because today's world, we'll just put it through a scan and user-friendliness is something different. It's content that we might be missing.
I, I kind of along with that is like, the content pieces, what I'm concerned about is because, um, I know it's not like a broken record, but we have different segments that are still super concerned and I, and I don't mind naming them. The agricultural community is still concerned, the development is concerned, the trustee, fire and safety are still concerned about the content that's in. From, and I say from when they came and did the open house, because they couldn't know what exactly the changes were. And they want to be able to have a public meeting to be able to discuss that. But they wanted to see what, what the changes were. And they couldn't tell what the changes were from the existing copy to the new copy. And I'm not saying that they totally disagree with that, but there are pieces that they disagree with, that they have seen. And so they want to be able to have an opportunity to talk about that. And so whether that's a public meeting or platform or whatever that is, but they want something concrete. They've expressed that to me, I've expressed it to you guys. So I know it's not like a broken record, but till we see like the before and after.
Should I just go ahead and post the draft on the website and just get the mystery off of it?
But I think it's, I think the draft part doesn't mean anything unless you see the before.
I mean, the before is lost still. It's there still. But it is going to be, I mean, this is unified, so it's.
But see, that's what I'm saying. They want to see the before and then what was changed, kind of what you were saying.
Maybe what it is, is that they can tell us what they rejected. Do they keep a registry of what they rejected from our existing ordinance, from the steering committee minutes? Do they, because the, it's interesting, when you publish something, it's what's below the fold that is very telling, what, what they leave out. And, and what did they purposely leave out because they were directed by someone? There's got to be something that they give us more than, here it is. Because there's got to, I mean, if, if they're experienced in doing this, they should know that they need to present some sort of context.
There's still stuff I'm trying to look up in the draft, but they're blank pages, so.
I think that we, you know, I, I guess we're all a little bit guilty, but I, I think that we allowed them to go, to, to use a process that probably wasn't the best for us because it's like what Rhonda said, they, they said, this is a format of a UDO that works. And then they just started editing it by reading our zoning. So they would come to a section and they're like, what should this section be? And then, then they would go to the steering committee and they would take all that input and then they would work on that section. And then we'd get that section done and the staff would check that off and we'd move on. And so then what we're, now what we're faced with are these two very different documents. And then we turned around and said, give us a side-by-side comparison. And they're like, well, something like that doesn't really exist because we just created this brand-new zoning document, you know? So we're, that's why I made the comment of a new agreement. Maybe, that's probably not the right thing because they do owe us something better, I think. But, um, I think we just, we need them to do more work is essentially what it's come down to, is to make it so.
Rearrange it, obviously, to make it more user, user-friendly, different from what it was before, so.
Yeah, a list of things that the steering committee asked to be changed, I think, would probably do what needs to be done. And that could just be from the minutes of this, of the steering committee meetings, they could just, you know, because Holly and Darla were keeping notes as they were going. And so there, it should be able to be pulled from, from that, I think.
Is it possible to give the planning commissioners access to all the minutes from the steering committee, those who were not involved?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Go through anything. Question wise. So I'm kind of hoping that I'm, when I do a review, legal review, that it's in its final form. Last thing that happened. I don't think we're quite there. Our current code incorporated in. Don't want it in. I have to do a legal review. Review that's, um, the last version, you know?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so I think we just need to get another, another run at that. A, a list of the, of the changes, the steering committee changes, I think, and then.
Also, since Vanderwall's in front of us, Kayla, when do we do like a, I don't know what you would call it, another touch on our comprehensive plan? Where we kind of say, okay, like, we've done this for a little bit, when do we kind of look at it again and say, were they right? Are there things that we need to take another look at, see if there's anything we need to change or update or?
I believe once every five years is suggested. So this process on our last one, I think, started in 2020, so we should probably start planning for that. So 2028 officially would be when we would adopt, I guess, or aim for adoption of a, uh, update. 2027 would be a big work year then, I would probably envision. Meaning 20, we should probably start planning because my 2026 budget goes before council next month.
It's, it's not, and there's already been, things have come up, it seems like, that the comp plan needs a little, little massaging, yeah.
What year was the comp plan approved?
It was adopted in January of 2023.
One of them comes to mind is the, thinking about trying to get ahead of, is this whole 200 corridor. Because with Amplify being, um, developed and all the things that are going to happen with the, um, interchange there. It seems like it makes a whole, or I should say, proposed interchange off of 70. Seems like that makes sense that we should be really thinking about that now. About what, we'd like to see that, whether that's an overlay or whatever, we should be thinking about that now. Or talking about it or whatever that needs to be in planning.
If you're going to do an overlay, bear to do it quickly because Greenfield just took it and ran with it and they're doing a comprehensive plan for 2 West. If you haven't seen it, they've got, they've got everything designed out there, what they think it should be.
Okay.
So. Might want to speed that up then.
Yeah. As part of their comp plan?
Yeah, as part of their comp plan.
Okay.
For the regional center?
Uh, for that whole 2 West interchange, yeah, all the way up in that area, including Amplify.
Whose jurisdiction is that?
Right now, it's the county's.
That's the county, isn't it?
That doesn't mean they're not going to start annexing as fast as they can.
Yeah, right now, they're thinking 31, what I think is, they're planning on stuff coming up 200 and then going in 100. And they plan on annexing all the way to 200 West.
So do we need to start putting stakes up out there or what? I thought you were saying? I don't know.
I guess planners are a very peaceful crowd and we like to get along. And if, if somebody's done good planning, there's no reason we can't go run with it. Just like we would hope that the towns, um, and the city would take pieces of our plans that are good. Maybe we look at that and see what they've got.
Okay.
But it seems like we should be having conversations about that, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, let's get a look at that and see what's going on there, so. Yeah. Well, yeah, let's get a look at that and see what's going on there. So, all right, what's up with quality of place plan?
So, part of, speaking of all of this, part of our comprehensive plan, as you guys know, is an economic development strategy that HEDC is the lead on. Part of the economic development strategy is actually a quality of place plan. And that quality of place plan establishes that communities that attract good business, big businesses, and keep growing existing businesses have something we would, we call in this plan, quality of place. And that is distinctive amenities, unique entertainment opportunities, things that really make this a place we want to go to. Like, kind of like what Shirley's showing us tonight with, you know, pinball and a cool hat store, like, even things like that, that if you think about this as, okay, we take it and run with it, you know, we could say Hancock County as a whole has things going on, like, we've got this great, small agricultural vibe going on in the northern part of the county, and in other areas where we've got lots of orchards, and the piney acres and things like that. These are quality of place elements. Additionally, things like the depot, that's a quality of place element to the max. You've got an existing structure that has now a restaurant in it, so it was an eyesore, they've turned it into a tourist destination. It's now got ice cream and a beer garden, and they're building a parking garage, and also they've got an amphitheater right there. Just one, these things all grow things together, and they attract quality businesses to your community. So that's how it fits into that quality of place plan. So what this plan is, is then a whole kind of inset to our comprehensive plan. It includes suggestions, not only for the county, but also for the towns, and gives a list of suggested steps to move forward, an implementation table. And it really highlights ways that Hancock County is already awesome and could become even better. I've got letters of support from all of the communities in the county, except for Wilkinson. So I've never quite talked to somebody on the town council in town of Wilkinson. Someday I will, I'm sure. But, so everybody except for town of Wilkinson has provided a letter of support of. And anyway, adoption of this would then become part of our, our planning documents. It would go in our book as well. I know it's a hefty document, so if you need additional time, I totally understand. Mary Gibble at the Community Foundation and her team worked really hard with HWC to come up with this document for HEDC, and held the, I think probably many of you were at the pub, at the public open house for this. So anyway, I'll kind of leave it to you guys to look through it, unless you have specific questions, but we can definitely, the result should be, or I would hope for, I guess, a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for a resolution adopting this as one of our comprehensive planning documents.
Were we allowed to change it? Because it seems to me, looking at it from a council perspective, I'm concerned about taxes from it, additional taxes coming for people, and spending. That's very concerning in that document. That's what I got from it. I mean, there's other parts that are great, like, here's what would be great for quality of place. I mean, that's not an issue, it's just how you pay for it. And I don't want to put anything on too, we're already, let's be honest, we can't even fund the planning department well enough, over all these years. I mean, I don't want to put something else that burdens the taxpayers and burdens the county making these tough decisions in the next month. So that's my question, is can we make changes to it? And we do parts of it.
Certainly, just like we can the whole comprehensive plan, I would say. But at this point, I guess I don't have a good answer for you about how we would change this in particular, since it is, I would have to talk to Mary Gibble a little bit more about it, but it's kind of been through its.
I think the answer is who has jurisdiction to approve that, and it's us, I think we always, let's not, let's not mix anything up. I think that'd be overextending, that something given to us is either a go or no-go, because if we can't make changes, there's a big risk of no-go, right?
Correct.
Okay. Couple of questions for me. We see the most conflict in mixed-use scenarios, which is the number-one bullet from Vanderhill, Vanderwall, promote mixed-use in commercial and residential districts. We saw this tonight. We're just going to see a lot of concern. How, the, the quality of, of life, quality of planning, quality of place, has a lot of, is that mostly mixed-use?
It talks about these downtown areas a lot, and existing structures. In fact, that's one of the things that highlighted was existing structures that we already have.
Okay, good. All right, so it's in existing structures or existing developments, it's not kind of encouraging, okay. And my second question is, what reliance or what references will we have on this when voting? Because the sidewalks plan was great, and we've referenced that a lot, I do. Is this going to have the same?
Yes, this would be referred to as part of our comprehensive planning package, right along with Mount Comfort Corridor Plan, and the things like that.
Would we, would we then also have a deference where there's conflicting references in the existing comprehensive plan, I know, to this?
That is a good question.
And then, last question. What in there is also talked about in the UDO, because now we just are passing a UDO with a comprehensive plan, and we have an assessment of how they work together, and then we got this thing. So, so what, those would be my questions, if presented those.
Yeah.
So, I guess I have a lot of questions about this quality of place plan, and I worked on this plan. About why she's asking us to adopt it, it's really something that the foundation did. And I questioned the comprehensiveness of it, because of the makeup of the people that were involved in that plan, and about the touchpoints of the areas of how it was surrounded. And so I just wonder, like, why she's asking the planning commission for the adoption of that, when it really seemed like it was being driven by the foundation and the implementation of that, and the things that they were asking to be driven. It seemed like it was being, going to be funded by the, by the foundation.
The funding and sponsorship, we should celebrate. We should love that, the fact that there are participants in our community who are helping us in a lot of ways. I think that's a wonderful thing. We're contributing to community health and wellness, we're contributing to economic development, we're contributing to a better tax base. There's, there's tons of things that has benefit. I just think that there's a, like, we had, like, the buck stops here, but we have to evaluate what's been given and understand what the sponsorship mechanisms that have come to us, and understand what the stakeholders are there. So, that's all. As long as we just remember, like, we're not just going to rubber stamp something that we have to take a look at.
Right, that we're not going to be held accountable for implementing the, the endorsement of the plan. That's what I guess I'm just saying is like.
If we're, either that, or we have assurances that the implementation plan will be separately funded, when it would need to be a condition.
I guess that's what I'm just saying about, I just want to make sure that it's not going to say, like, we're, we're endorsing it, that it becomes our responsibility to make sure that it's implemented.
We'll have to vote according to it, so it'll be our responsibility.
Yeah, that's been my concern, is that if it becomes a part of the comprehensive plan, much like the Mount Comfort Corridor, it becomes another guiding document, and it's just, it's a lot to, to compare and to watch over.
Better that it's incorporated and unified than floating out there, though.
It is, but at the same time, I, one thought that I had, and it was something else I was going to ask about this evening, is if you remember Gateway, they, they wanted to be, what'd they call it, an interested party or whatever, they wanted to be notified about all this stuff, you know? And we're working towards that, and I wanted to get an update on that tonight, too. It's like, where were we with making sure that we get everything uploaded to the system, so that everybody can get their emails? And you can, you can sign up to get the emails and be notified of what's going on in your community. So if the Community Foundation wants to be the, the keeper of the quality of place, they can, much like Gateway, sign up for the emails, get notified of a petition, and then come and speak at the plan commission meeting and say, we don't think that this meets the quality of place guidelines, you guys should take another look.
Or apply to be one of the community hubs, I forget what we called it, but we had the ability for any organized institution to create sort of the precursor to an appearance here, to kind of work it out as a benefit to us, right?
Yeah.
And so they would, it would just, you know, follow, that's a great opportunity for, for maybe some preliminary input before it comes here as well.
Structured remonstrance, I guess, would be an option.
I guess the other thing that concerns me, to be honest, I see, like, when we had the meetings, there's only 300 people that participated collectively in this quality of life, quality of place.
Sounds like a ton to me. That sounds like a lot, 300 people?
I don't think that's a lot at all.
Oh.
Not compared to the remonstrators of the other ones.
No, I don't think that, when you're talking about a quality of place thing, for 300 people to decide what the quality of place is for Hancock County, I don't think that's a lot of people to determine about what quality of place is for our, for our communities.
I understand that, but, but from government involvement and volunteerism?
Not when we're talking about, I mean, they have all these different touches. And so that's, I guess that's the other piece that concerns, concerns me.
Well, that's the thing, it's, it's just an ongoing problem in, in, in planning, you know. It's like, we did all that comprehensive planning stuff, and we get 200 or 300 people to come to an open house, but as soon as somebody proposes a data center, we can fill a comp, we can fill an auditorium, auditorium with 500 people. You know, it's like they, you don't, it's always reactive, it's not proactive with, with, and so I don't know how you ever solve that, but things like what the Community Foundation did is kind of a step in the right direction. But if they, they want to proactively use their document and come speak to the plan commissioner, the commissioners based on that, I just don't know that we need to formally adopt it necessarily.
Right, because it would go, it would go to, we would adopt it, and then we'd give it to the commissioners to adopt. So then you're saying, hey, we're committing to this.
Yeah.
And that's, and that was the concern with the funding and money, and I'm like, no, we can't make sure that this organization gets another employer, that organization's, I mean, that's up to each organization, not.
I think we need to understand some of the, what is compelling, the components of this, especially if, if, with economic development. I, I do think we should hear on the purpose and see what, what, if this is.
Oh, no doubt there is a benefit there, yeah.
And, and when hearing, we often see an opening of, of a multitude of opportunities to engage in a plan like this, maybe not comprehensive plan, or maybe excerpts could be. But I think when hearing and going through that process, and hearing remonstrance related to it, it's, it's healthy, it's just kind of.
Hey, anything else, quality of place?
Did Mitchell Kirk say anything when he was here this evening?
Said he likes it, but he was probably on the committee, wasn't he?
Works for economic development.
Well, I know that.
But, I mean, I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, I don't want to be misunderstood about not liking or not thinking, but I think we just have to be careful about where, about our commitment, what role we take on and our responsibility about that.
I don't want to be a misunderstood about liking it.
So I guess, what, what do you, what kind of direction do you want from us? Do you want to see what the Community Foundation feels like as far as maybe becoming an interested party? Or do you still think you want us to try and adopt it in some way, or what's, what's the ask here?
Do you believe that the ask would be to adopt this as a part of our comprehensive plan, since we do have the economic development strategy and the thoroughfare plan in here as well? And this is called out as a theme in our economic development strategy, and also something that we are severely lacking in any direction on across our county. So I, I guess my ask tonight would be for, just continue this for the next month, and let's really read it. And if you want somebody more versed in this than me to be presenting it to you, let's see if we can find that person to come and talk to you.
But I think the big thing is make changes, and we want to make changes. Because, I mean, if we're going to approve it, then it's going to be the nine of us, or the majority of the nine of us siding. And then you got three commissioners, and you're going to have to have at least two of them that like it. So otherwise, it doesn't, it's just a waste of our time.
All right, so homework, read it. No watching Ninja Warrior until you get it read, Byron.
Yeah.
So it's almost like we want to adopt our own quality of place plan.
Yeah.
Oh. So has this been emailed to us?
It was part of your packet. If you clicked on the quality of place plan in your agenda, this came up.
Yeah, anybody can look at it, actually, the whole public, if they, you can notify the public and say, people watching, they can go click on the agenda and click on it, and they can read the whole plan. And then give feedback to the commissioners and to, I don't know, I guess to you, to us. Everybody email Kayla.
Yeah, yep.
Or read the 97.
Yeah, read the 97 pages.
Questions I have about the clicking agenda and how that process is going. Does everybody, is it working for everyone? Can you get to the agenda? Because I think that will alleviate Dawn having to mail out, email out, and then you think you, what do I have? Because some things are coming. He just provides you the link to the agenda, which you can get to on the website. I think that would be easier for you, Dawn, and then everybody would know whenever there's something from this meeting, it's going to be.
But are we going to, so either that, or we're going to have to be on our, our devices if nothing, if not everything is printed for us? So I just, if not everything is printed here, then just know we're all going to be looking on our devices.
I didn't really, I wouldn't do the printing, but what I was saying, like, ahead of time,
When the agenda comes out.
Oh, I'll get you, I get you there. I get you there. So, but, but we reference things and that all the time. So it's either got to be in front of us, or partially in front of us, and then know that we're going to be referencing on our devices.
Yeah, well, so I think what she's getting at, so what they're trying to do is get all of the submitted documents compiled in a folder and linked onto the agenda by, what is it, 10 days or something before the, the meeting. So then these interested parties that are getting notified, they'll be able to look at the agenda and look at everything and be up to date.
This is on the county website?
So they know if they want to remonstrate or not.
Yes, this is on the county website, under agendas.
So the benefit to them is they get to decide, do I want to remonstrate against this or not? And the benefit for us is it's all right there, and we're not getting 15 emails or whatever, so.
I, I think maybe when, if something is added to the agenda, Dawn, you could send out an email saying, the agenda has been revised. You could always give them the link, so they don't have to go to the website. Send them the link to the agenda on the county website. Update has been made. But I really didn't think that you wouldn't also do the printed ones for when.
Unless it's a massive 500-page document, and we're all told, please bring your devices to review this.
Updated subdivision appeal with the X comp.
Minutes.
Yeah.
That was not part of the report. I printed it for you all. Yes, I didn't.
Probably easier to do.
I think that's about it.
I like it. I know.
Any, any other discussion?
It is good for the public. I mean, it's good for, for, everyone could see it and. All right, motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign?
So, is on the website? Is this, this isn't on the website? This is. Plan.
Yeah, it's on there. You should have emailed the agenda, there's a, the thing in blue will say packet, or report, or whatever. You just click on the blue link, and it'll take you to everything.
And you know what? I might have been there.